Let's call the roll.
Mayor Circe here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Is here.
Is here.
I see him.
We see Councilmember Gilbert. Councilmember Gilbert, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hanzek.
Present.
And Councilmember Westelec.
Here.
Excellent. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, this evening's agenda is packed full of presentations, so it should be a very informative evening. Uh, tonight, we have, um, three presentations. The first is the FY twenty-five annual comprehensive financial report and audit. The second is the police employees retirement plan and actuarial valuation. Um, and the third item is the city manager FY twenty-seven budget projections. This evening, we have three items in the voting session. The first is the first reading ordinance awarding a contract for rent stabilization study. The second is the first reading ordinance approving use of unassigned reserves to fund immigrant support services. And the third is a single reading ordinance approving the purchase installation and service of a new council dais. Uh, we will have two work sessions this evening. The first is a finalization of legislative priorities. And the, um, second is development and implementation of a community connectors model. With that, um, on Thursday, uh, on Thursday, um, November the thirteenth, the council will be in closed session at seven P M. Hold on, I just want to make sure I have my statements. Um, the council will vote to convene in closed session at seven P M. On Thursday, November the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the community center auditorium to hear an update from the attorney conducting the audit related to Cooper v. City of Tacoma Park. The meeting will be closed pursuant to Maryland Code General Provisions Article three dash three zero five B one I I to address personnel matters that affect one or more specific individuals and or section three dash three zero five B seven to consult with legal counsel to obtain advice regarding the regarding the audit related to Cooper v. City of Tacoma Park. The council, the city council will not convene in public, uh, after the meeting. And if you have any questions regarding that closed session, please contact our city clerk. On Monday, November the seventeenth, the, um, the, the, the city staff will be hosting a community budget forum that will be, um, held virtually. Um, information about that event is available on our website. Uh, November the nineteenth through the twenty-second is the National League of Cities, City Summit in Salt Lake City. Um, a few of us on council will be attending that event. On Wednesday, November the nineteenth, the city council's regular meeting at seven thirty, um, will be virtual because of um, a number of council members attending the National League of Cities, uh, City Summit. Um, we will have three presentations that evening. Um, the first is Council Conversation Committee Final Report. The second is new Ave Bike Ways Update. Uh, we will also have the financial forecast preliminary results. Um, that will be facilitated by, um, a financial consultant. Um, and we do have another presentation that evening. It is the budget survey results, um, for the council and the community. The voting session, second reading ordinance approving the use of unassigned reserves to fund immigrant services. That'll be our second reading ordinance. And then we will have three work sessions that evening. The first is a proposed amendments to the noise ordinance. The second is the council budget priorities, and third is Public Safety Task Force Update. On Wednesday, November the twenty-sixth, the city council will not meet. On Thursday, November the twenty-second, Thanksgiving Day, the city offices and facilities are closed Thursday through Sunday for the Thanksgiving holiday. On Wednesday, December the third, the city council will meet, um, at six thirty that evening. Um, we will start with a special meeting with our District Twenty legislators at six thirty. Um, and then we will have two voting sessions that evening. The first is a resolution regarding development and implementation of a community connectors model and the first reading ordinance amending the noise ordinance. Um, we will then have three work sessions that evening. The first is the atrium project, um, contract. Uh, the budget, council budget priorities and the plan to address unlawful restricted covenants. And then our last meeting for the year will be held on December the tenth. Council will meet at its regular time of seven thirty. We'll start with two presentations, a Housing and Community Development Annual Report, Arts and Humanities Committee, uh, um, and then the Arts and Humanities Committee Annual Report. And then we will have a voting session including, uh, resolution adopting the FY twenty, twenty-seven budget priorities, uh, single reading ordinance awarding a contract for the atrium infill project, single reading ordinance amending the noise ordinance, and resolution providing for the city council's winter recess, which will be from December the eleventh, twenty twenty-five until January the thirteenth, twenty twenty-six. And so with that, we're going to move to public comments on voting items. Just as a reminder, this evening, there are three voting items. The first is the single reading ordinance awarding a contract for the rent stabilization study. The second is the first reading ordinance approving the use of unassigned reserves to fund immigrant support services. The third is the single reading ordinance approving the purchase installation and service of a new council dais. Do we have any comments on voting items this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Paul Huberman, Ward Three. I come ill-prepared tonight, but I was moved, uh, by the presentations that I see to reiterate my request that the council postpone or table the selection of the proposed, uh, uh, survey, uh, uh, survey person from California. And not only are they the highest at a hundred and eleven thousand, but you weren't even given the information until it was requested first by me and then followed up by another council member. This looks pretty disingenuous. And really, I'm, I'm very dismayed at the fact that the city manager supports this idea. He endorses this idea. And he endorses that in spite of the fact that this year's proposed budget is two and a half million dollars in deficit. Last year's was one point nine million dollars in deficit, and the twenty-five approved was two, one point six million dollars in deficit. How much? We're in deficit. You have eighty-five thousand dollars allocated, and they want more. Is there no, if you look at the performance metrics, every single department except for police, okay, wants more, more of everything. More staff, more money, more consultants. Look at that one-page table. It shows it all. We have got to find a way. On my block, six houses, there are five unemployed federal employees right now. They don't have a job, and they haven't had a job for forty days. I, I don't know what they're, they're doing. You know what I mean? I also know three people, three, one, two, three, that actively work with me, you know, such as this, for the village doing small repairs, that lost their job to Doge, A I D and D O L. I mean, we've got to find a way to curtail expenditures. They're really off the hook. And this is no way to run a hot dog stand. I mean, it's just, it doesn't make any sense. And I think that people are doing due diligence on trying to apply their, their beliefs, but the number one belief needs to be to serve the residents. I want to remind you that you work for the residents. Now, I, you don't work for me necessarily, except as one of many, but many of these people are, I see people suffering. When I go in the homes of some of these folks from the village, I'm telling you, they need help. And I, yeah, they're, but, yeah, and I, and I come to you with this because I was a renter. I lived in nine places before I got out of high school. Nine, nine. Now, some of you may have done that. Nine different apartments. Now, you don't move because you like to. You move because you're poor, okay? And I, that was not my choice, but it was my destiny. And because of that, I feel a real kinship with the renters. And I think that they and many of our other residents who are really, I don't want to say suffering, but thirty percent, forty-seven percent of renters are housing burden. Is that, is that real? I mean, if that's true, then you must be moved. I hope you're moved. I pray you're moved.
Thank you, Mr. Huberman.
And I thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments on voting items this evening?
I'm Gag Leard. I live in the city of Tacoma Park. All of you represent all of us. If it matters, I live in Ward One. I wasn't going to speak, but after that speech, all I can say is one hundred percent what Paul Huberman said.
Thank you. Do we have any other, um, comments on voting items?
Do we have any virtual comments on voting items?
Do we have any general public comments this evening?
Go right ahead.
Tomorrow night, you're going to vote whether or not to go into closed session to get a report from the consultant on the Cooper versus Tacoma Park sexual harassment matter. I've sent each of you, I've sent the administrator, sent the city attorney, and I've sent the, sent the attorney at, uh, the law firm that's doing the audit. Do not close the meeting unless you really are going to talk about a personnel matter involving a current city employee. Do not close the meeting unless you really are going to get legal advice rather than a report on what has been done and what remains to be done. You close too many meetings. No more secret government in Tacoma Park.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments?
Arthur David Olson, Ward Four, Herbie Hancock, Abbott. The council has determined that the city's communication strategy isn't working and is spending six figures on a community connector program to try to fix things. In addition to adding programs that might work, the council can eliminate programs that don't work. Recent budgets consistently note reduced cable franchise fee revenue. It has fallen from a high of two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-eleven to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-four and is projected to fall even more. That reduced revenue results from, uh, people doing cable cutting. The cable cutting means that cable TV has less and less reach and is less and less effective. The city can drop its cable TV channel and the associated expenses, maintaining the streaming platforms that do reach cable cutters. There's another way to join the twenty-first century. Weekday circulation of the Washington Post has fallen from a high of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in nine, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand in nineteen ninety-three to ninety-seven thousand this year. People are making less and less use of print media. The city can drop its newsletter, or at least drop the printed and mailed version of it. Nearby cities Gaithersburg and College Park manage just fine without paper newsletters, as do Montgomery County, the state of Maryland, and the federal government. My sense is that it's best to have a communication strategy using just the internet for easy-to-reach folks and the connectors program for hard-to-reach folks. On a general matter, over the past few weeks, I've made suggestions about a reasonable level of property tax revenue and ways to achieve that level. Some of you may not like some of the suggestions. All of you may not like any of the suggestions. But the science adage applies. No experiment is a failure. It can always serve as a bad example. And to quote our, the late official peace delegate Pat Lovelace, if I can do it, you can do it. With the council's public budget priority work beginning in earnest tonight, now's the time for all of you to share your suggestions for a proper taxation level and ways to achieve it, providing a good example. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Do we have any virtual?
Okay, great. We're going to move on to council comments. Do we have any council comments this evening? Okay, seeing none. We're going to, I will go through, uh, a few comments that I have this evening. Um, let's see. I want to, uh, thank the Historic Tacoma, um, for their, um, their annual um, meeting that happened on, uh, Saturday. I think it was Saturday. Let me just check. Sorry, Sunday, on Sunday. Um, it was a ve- very busy Sunday afternoon, but I really appreciate, um, them inviting us and learning more about the wonderful work that Historic Tacoma does. Um, I also want to thank the, um, Tacoma Foundation, um, for hosting, um, their special event where they announce um, some of their, um, grantees, and it has been really, um, it was really helpful to hear directly from um, some of their, um, grant recipients because they're really doing some wonderful work within the city of Tacoma Park. Um, so I do want to thank the Tacoma Foundation. Um, really quickly, because I know that we have a bunch of presentations this evening. Um, on Friday, um, I am going to be meeting with, um, the young ladies of Girls on the Run. Uh, so we'll have a chance to, they are doing some, some trash pickup work, uh, behind Piney Branch, and so I'm looking forward um, to speaking to the group of runners, and hopefully I will getting inspired to run. So I'm looking forward to that. Um, and lastly, um, also, I will be attending this weekend on Saturday, um, the Small Things Matter, um, fundraiser gala, so I'm looking forward to that as well. And so with that, I'm going to turn things over to our city manager for city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, and residents and guests this evening. From the Housing and Community Development Department, tomorrow, November thirteenth at one P M., please join city staff to hear about the planned upgrade to our stretch of the Metropolitan Branch Trail. The public will have a chance to walk the project limits and learn about how the city is improving safety and accessibility along the trail, which connects to the district as well as to Silver Spring. The tour will be, will start below the Montgomery College Pedestrian Bridge at approximately seventy-six seventy-six Fenton Street. Please register online on the city website to help city staff plan adequately. From the Police Department, we are collecting items to support families who count on SNAP. Your generosity keeps our community strong. You can drop off a donation in the bin in our police department lobby. The items most needed are rice, beans, canned and dry, tuna, sardines, chicken, canned or pouches, shelf-stable milk, cereal, dry pasta, grains, and bars such as granola and so forth. Our next Coffee with a Cop is scheduled for next Wednesday, November nineteenth, from ten A M. until twelve P M. This event is hosted in partnership with Montgomery College and will be held on their Tacoma Park Silver Spring campus in the Student Services Building, first floor, across from the cafeteria. Please stop by with questions, concerns, or even just to say hello. The Police Department will be holding a community meeting to discuss public safety issues in Ward Six. Police Department staff will be providing an update on recent incidents in Ward Six and provide an overall overview of crime stats and trends and security measures put in place to address these trends. Meeting will take place on Tuesday, November eighteenth, from seven P M. to nine P M. At the Tacoma Park Recreation Center at seventy-three fifteen New Hampshire Avenue. The meeting will be in person, and a Zoom webinar will also be available to join and ask questions. To register for the meeting, the link is on our Tacoma Park webpage. Just search Ward Six Community Meeting. If you have any questions in advance of the meeting, please send them to Kathy Plebey at kathy p@tacoma park M D dot gov. On Friday, November twenty-eighth, from four thirty until seven P M., make plans for Cookies with Santa. Enjoy cookies, get your photo taken with Santa, bring a new unopened toy, and the photo is free. Or make a cash donation for your photo. This event takes place at the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department at seventy-two oh one Carroll Avenue and is sponsored by the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department and the Tacoma Park Police Department. If you're gonna, if you will be going away for the Thanksgiving holiday for at least four days, but less than thirty, don't have anyone staying in your home, including house or pet sitters, you can take advantage of our free vacant house check. Information and the application are on the city's police department's webpage. From Public Works, Fall Leaf Collection will be starting November seventeenth and running through December nineteenth. Residents can take rake leaves to the curb side at their convenience during the five-week collection program. The city has five zones for leaf collection with a collection crew assigned to each zone. These crews will provide collection to every street at least twice during the five-week period. Some important reminders, please. Place leaves into piles behind the curb. Please avoid putting leaves into the street. Do not include branches, brushes, vines, rocks, or debris. These items damage equipment and delay collection. Do not pile leaves near storm drain inlets. Leaves can block the drains and cause flooding problems. And do not park your car on top of a leaf pile. Doing so may cause a fire. There are five state highway streets that receive collection on specific days due to the higher traffic volumes. Those streets are Carroll Avenue, Ethan Allen Avenue, and Philadelphia Avenue, which will receive collection on Saturday, November twenty-second, and Monday, December fifteenth. Also, Piney Branch Road and Flower Avenue from the seventy-nine hundred to eighty-six hundred blocks, which will receive collection on Friday, November fourteenth, and Saturday, December thirteenth. Residents can report when their leaf piles are at the curb by calling the Public Works Leaf Collection Hotline at three oh one eight nine one seven six two six. From Recreation, we're thrilled to share that the Teen Lounge is officially open again. The lounge has a new home in the space formerly known as the Game Room and will be open Monday through Friday from three P M. to six P M. Teens are invited to stop by for snacks, fun programs, and engaging activities each afternoon. We can't wait to welcome everyone back and provide a safe, inviting place to relax and connect after school. Celebrate the season with good food, great company, and plenty of cheer. That's cheer, not beer. The Tacoma Park Recreation Department invites community seniors uh, to our holiday lunch on Friday, November twenty-first, from, uh, twelve noon to two P M. in the senior room. Enjoy a delicious meal, lively music, fun games, and the warmth of community as we come together to celebrate the holidays. And finally, from my office, just a reminder, as alluded to a bit earlier, the budget forum will, for FY twenty-seven, will be held on this coming Monday, November seventeenth, at seven P M. This meeting will be solely virtual so as to try to include a wider spectrum of our residents. This meeting will be solely virtual so as to try to include a wider spectrum of our residents. The links to join this Budget Forum will be provided on the city's website. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to our first presentation this evening. The FY25 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Audit. Director Chung. Let me get your mic going. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and guests. I would like to introduce Mr. Timothy Sawyer, the Audit Partner of Barbara King Thornton and Company. Mr. Sawyer and his audit team has worked closely with me and my staff throughout the city's annual audit process, which started from July through October. Their collaborative approach has been helpful in ensuring a thorough and transparent review of the city's financial performance for the fiscal year 2025. If you're interested in a more detailed analysis, the comprehensive audit report is available on page 14 through 17 on the financial report. Without further delay, please join me to welcome Mr. Timothy Sawyer as he present the FY25 Audit Results. And Mr. Sawyer is joining us virtually tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening, everyone. Everybody hear me okay?
Give us one second. Let's just make sure that we can hear you a little better in the room. It sounds, your mic is a little low.
Okay.
I think that's better. Can you, can you test your mic one more time?
Sure, how's that? Can you hear me good?
That is perfect. That is excellent. Thank you very much.
Great, okay. All right, as Susan said, I'm here to go over the audit results for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025. And my name is Tim Sawyer. I'm the Audit Partner of Barbara King Thornton Company. So to jump in and, and give you the results of the audits on your financial statements, we have issued unmodified opinions, which means we believe the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with United States Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, or US GAAP. During our audit, we followed standards of, yeah, a set forth Generally Accepted in the United States of America, as well as government auditing standards, which is referred to as the Yellow Book. I'm happy to report that there are no current findings in the report. And just to point out that there was a emphasis of matter paragraph in the audit opinion this year due to the adoption of Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 101 related to compensated absences. That was a standard that they issued that had to be implemented this year, and it has been included in your report. Just to give you a brief kind of a synopsis of the responsibilities in an audit, which are outlined in our Independent Auditor's Report on pages 14 through 17 of the document. Management is ultimately responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. And as a non-audit service, we do assist management with the preparation of those financial statements. And once they're prepared and in draft format, we issue them to management so they can review, ask any questions, any clarifications, maybe some reclassifications depending on the review. And then they ultimately accept responsibility by signing a management representation letter at the end of the audit. Our responsibility, of course, is to express an opinion on the financial statements, which we have done, and to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are fairly presented. We say reasonable assurance because it's the highest level we can offer because we do not test every single transaction in your audit. We do testing based on samples, so that's why we can only present reasonable insurance. Just to give you a flavor of the audit and the audit approach. So our audits are designed to target areas that we consider greater risk. Some of those are defined in our standards. Our risk assessment includes inquiries of individuals at the various levels of the city, as well as documentation of the city's internal controls, as well as analytical procedures where we'll review historical trend data, compare budget to actual results, and compare actual data with known facts. Where we review the minutes, contracts, and other agreements that are pertinent to, you know, major financial transactions. We'll do our substantive procedures, which are, you know, test of details. And we also do a test of controls on the city's internal controls. We usually do those on a rotating basis, and this year it was test of controls over expenditures. And much like our audit opinion, I'm happy to tell you that our test of controls determine that your controls are designed and operating effectively. Looking at your fund balances. So the first several items on here are your major funds. So your general fund, Speed Camera Fund, Special Revenue, and your ARPA funds. And then you have your, there's a couple of non-major funds. Fund balances, pretty, pretty normal, I guess, results. General fund did go up about a million and a half. The Speed Camera went from 88,000 up to 482,000. Special Revenue was down a little bit from 3.6 to 2.1 related to some capital expenditures. And the ARPA Fund went from 270 up to 503. And your major, non-major funds went from 363 to 413. Taking a little deeper look at the general fund balance. You have a small amount in non-spendable, which is basically some prepaid expenses. Your restricted dropped from 1.2 to 99,000 mainly because the remaining bond funds were spent related to the library project. The committed balance of 8.2 is down to 7.3, 7.4 million. And then your unassigned went from 10.8 up to 14.3. And then you total all those together, and that's your 21.8 for the year compared to 20.4 last year. Looking at your general fund revenues. Your property taxes and utility fees were up a little bit from 21.8 to 23 million. The most of your other revenues were fairly consistent from year to year in the general fund. A little bit less in miscellaneous, but that was the, the major change there was the property taxes and utility fees in the general fund revenues. Looking at other revenues, or other fund revenues, I should say. The biggest change here from year to year to, I guess, really is fines and forfeitures, which was related to the Speed Camera Fund. You can see went from 570,000 last year up to about a million one. And then in intergovernmental, you went from 2.2 to 9.5. The biggest increase there was, if you remember, you had received your ARPA funds, and those were kind of reserved until you started with the expenditures. And because of the library project, you had a lot of those, ARPA funds were recognized as revenue this past year. So you went from 2.2, 2.3 million last year to 9.5. On the expenditure side for the general fund, with the volume at the, the city, you can see most of your departmental expenses were pretty much in line with the, the prior year. No, no big or major swings that, anything that came to our attention. So 5.8 compared to 5.5 for general government, 8.8 compared to public safety, 9.4. Public Works was at 5.7 compared to 5.4. Housing and Community Development at 1.6 compared to 1.9. Recreation and Culture at 4.3 compared to 4.2. Your capital outlay expenditures in the general fund only, 3.2 compared to 3.9. And then your debt service was about 700,000 each year. Going through your other funds. Just depending here, but depending on the, on the funds and, and what they were used for. So again, your big ones, based on the revenue. You can see there, the big one is the capital outlay, which was about 810,000 last, last year, and is at 8.1 million this year. And 6.4, that really was related to the library construction just itself. Just to point you out in the financial statements, a couple other things. If you look at the financial statements on pages 34 and 35, this is how the city would look reporting on full accrual instead of modified accrual. So your fund levels statements are modified accrual. So that means you have some receivables, some payables. But those capital asset purchases are capital outlay expenditures. Your debt service payments are expenditures for principal and interest. And if you had any bond issuance or debt issuance, that is any other financing revenue. Whereas in the full accrual, all those items are on your, your balance sheet, if you will. So your statement of financial position, which would be your balance sheet, is, has $57 million in capital assets net of the accumulated depreciation and amortization. About $6.8 million in lease liabilities and bonds payable. 3.9 million is your compensated absences payable. 14.4 is the pension liability. And altogether, you have a $16.7 million net position. Quick look at the budget from last year. So the general fund amended budget anticipated revenues of $30.5 million, while your actual revenues came in higher or exceeded the anticipated revenues by 1.1. And we're at a 31.6 million in total. The general fund amended budget anticipated expenditures of 36.9 million, while your actual expenditures were less by 6.8 for a total of 30.2 million in actual expenditures. And just to point out, I'd like to let you know that we had full cooperation from management and the members of staff. So this really is a, a, a thank you for Susan and all her hard work, working with us and getting us all the information that we need. We had no disagreements with management, and there were no waived entries. Meaning if we did come across anything that needed adjustment, we proposed it. Management accepted that adjustment, and it was included in the audit report. With that, I would open it up to Mayor and Council if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you, thank you so much for this wonderful presentation. I want to just make sure, because this is a question that actually comes up for us quite a bit in terms of our budget numbers and whether or not we're, we're showing in terms of our budget a deficit versus what ultimately happens in the actuals. And so I just want to go, I'm sorry, my, my slides are not numbered. But if you could go back to the slide where you showed the, I think it's like, yeah, right before this one, where you, the budget, yeah. Can you just explain for the layman what this means? I, I take this to mean we tend to budget expecting lower revenues than we may receive. And then we sometimes budget that maybe our expenditures may be higher than we think. But the actuals come in in, in a slightly different way. Am I interpreting that correctly? So we're, we're not technically in a deficit of, of the general fund at the end of this review period?
Correct, correct. So yeah, so you're, yeah, so you, I would say, would have a conservative approach to your revenues. And then your true revenues come in better than budget. And, and kind of in the same way, another conservative approach, you're expecting higher expenditures and you come in less. Now, some of it could be, you know, on the expenditure side, you come in less, obviously, if you have, say, a number of vacancies employee-wide over the city, by the time you take their wages and other employment costs, that could give you a big factor of why you come in, you know, with such a large favorable variance on your budget, but.
Director Chung.
And I want to add more detail to Mr. Sawyer's comment. If you want to look at our financial forecast, financial report on page 40, it, it gives a very detailed listing of what is our original appropriated budget and what is our final appropriated budget, and also what is the actual expenditure. Okay, so comparing from the final budget to the actual expenditure, you can see that our total revenue in the budget was about $30.5 million, and it's exactly what is shown on the slide. And the second to last column shows the actual revenue. It shows 31.6 million. So that means we have, we are having a favorable variance of about 1.1 million, meaning that we actually collected more revenue than what it, what we budgeted for, for fiscal year 25. Mainly because when we do the revenue budget, we want to be conservative and not overly, you know, thinking that we will collect more money. So this is the, the way that we, we usually put in, in, into a budget for the revenue. And on the contrary, the expenditure side, we spend lower than what we budgeted. The final budget was about 3.69 million. I'm sorry, 36.9 million, which is exactly shown on the slide. And our actual expenditure came lower and is 30, the 30 million, 30.2 million dollars. And the total variance is about 6.8 million. And mainly is attributing to the column above. The highest variance is from the general government. General government, including the interdepartmental section of our expenditure. And also on the capital outlay, we have about 2.4 million, which is lower than what we expected. So, so that adds up to be about 6.8 million dollars in our expenditure variance.
Thank you, Director Chung. And, and so, I mean, we, we get this a lot. I mean, you get this a lot because you get the questions all the time. In terms of the rationale for what view, what appears to be budgeting at a loss, right? Like, why is it that we take this conservative approach, which might reflect that we are overspending, but when we get the actuals, we're actually not? Is there like a, a standard, or is there a reason why we choose to budget in this way?
As I said, the revenue side, we, we have a conservative approach. So we don't want, want to over-exaggerate our actual revenue. But on the expenditure side, we are, we are in a execution rate, you know, kind of approach because we don't usually spend every single dollar of what we budgeted. Sometimes the expenditure came, came much less, especially with the projects, the capital improvement projects. There are always some kind of delay or pro, project not be able to complete on a timely manner that actually make the expenditure much less than what we expected.
Thank you. And my last question, and I see there, there may be other, I'm sorry, direct, City Manager DeSpero, did you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, just, and thank you, Susan. You made a very good point about projects, capital projects that might not have been fully expensed during the fiscal year for a variety of reasons. And, you know, we've encountered, you know, delays in expending, you know, on the library as we were going through the construction phase, sometimes dealing with permitting and utilities and other factors largely beyond our control. And so the project timeframe moved, you know, further into the future. And some of the things that we had hoped to be able to accomplish and thus spend on were not always able to be completed in that given fiscal year. We also, you know, we have some projects that we just couldn't start for a variety of reasons, like doing a project that needed to have the library get out of the way first, things like that. And also salary savings from the standpoint that at any given time, there's always some vacancies. And traditionally, until this current year, we had budgeted without an execution rate. In other words, we'd budgeted at 100% of FTE's authorized positions. But with vacancies, there's savings, and some of that gets reflected at the end of the year as well in expense that doesn't occur.
So is the idea, and I apologize to my colleagues for taking so much time. Is the idea that some of the changes that were instituted? the idea that some of the changes that were instituted in the budgeting process, um, I wanna say like last year, we made some decisions around how to estimate um the execution rate is designed to try to close some of the gap in terms of what that difference in terms of the conservative approach with the revenues and the conservative approach with the expenditures and there's this huge gap in the budget, we're trying to mine that gap um to kind of lessen that gap a little bit, so we're not necessarily, um, for lack of better words, um, uh, taxing or trying to figure out the cost associated with things that we don't think we're necessarily gonna execute on. I know that was, that was something that was discussed during the budget. Um, the FY twenty-six budget that we're in and some changes were made to try to mine that gap a little bit better.
True.
Thank you for that. And um, the last question I have is about, and I'm sorry, Director Chung, you gotta stand up again. Uh, the, the um, the uh ARPA monies, and I will be so glad when they're out of this budget because they confuse me every time. So for, for these, um, the intergovernmental special, let's say it was the special, special other revenues. Um, so. Perfect, thank you. So, um, so that nine point five um mil, tho- that's the, the ARPA funds.
It's um mainly the ARPA fund.
Okay.
It's mainly the ARPA fund. Uh, if you look at um, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm al- always want to look into the detail of the financial report.
I appreciate that, I flagged the pages that you told me to.
Um, if you look at the page um thirty.
Thirty-eight?
Three, yeah. Thirty-three.
I think it's thirty-eight.
No, actually, it's thirty-eight. Page thir- thirty of the annual financial report and we, we call that page the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in the fund balance governmental funds, okay, for fiscal year twenty-five. So we listed different uh funds on this particular financial statement. The first column is the general fund, the second column is the speed and red light camera fund, uh, we haven't changed it yet uh because we still have this speed camera fine received. Uh, but next year, we'll, we'll completely change it to red light camera, okay? The third column is the special ra- revenue uh fund and then the last column, uh, the fourth column is the ARPA fund. The non-major funds include uh the storewater fund, okay? And there is a minor fund included in that. So the total of the five uh funds included is show on the total twenty-twenty-five and we're comparing the total of the fiscal year twenty-four next to it, okay? So you can see from the ARPA fund, the uh, the fourth column there, you, you see that the total revenue shows eight point nine million dollars, right? And the expenditure is showing eight point seven million dollars, the, 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 the actual difference uh of the eight point nine to eight point seven is because of the two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in the interest income in the ARPA fund account, okay? So like I explained in the first quarterly financial, uh, the federal funding um recognition, revenue re- recognition is different. We have to, we have to perform and see the expenditure and recognize the revenue afterwards. So you can see exactly the expenditure is eight point seven million. The amount that recognized in revenue is also eight point seven million, okay? So this is how we do for the fe- the, the, the federal grant. This is the way that we should do as a, a revenue recognition for the federal grant money.
Great, thank you so much. That was very clear, I, I, I get it now. Councilmember Hansai.
Thank you so much uh for this helpful presentation and walking us through some of those questions. Um, I guess, I think this might be a que- well, I'll, I'll let whoever take this question. Um, would, would we expect that now that we have a full staff, and I'm looking at our city manager too, uh, moving into the next year? I think that's approximately accurate, if not almost accurate. We're ge- we're getting a lot closer than we were. Um, let me put it that way, than we were in the, in the few years that I've been on council. Um, would you, would we expect to see that expenditures will be more in line with, with what is actually budgeted because of that and not only because of the salaries that are getting paid out, but also because I'm assuming that, um, and, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this is where, I'm assuming that as we get a fuller staff, that the programming that is anticipated, that is budgeted um and assumed in our budgets is more feasible to actually carry out within the fiscal year? Is that, would, would you say that's a fairly fair assumption and that would be where a lot of the, the change might be that we might see going into the next year barring any other big changes we don't know about?
Yeah, it's certainly our hope that as seats become filled, that are designed to deliver services, that we're matching our capacity with the goals and directives of the council, things that you wanna see accomplished uh in the year. We, uh, Mayor, uh, Cersei alluded earlier to the fact that we, in the current fiscal year, we did, uh, Mayor Council did approve an execution rate for personnel. So we are trying to bring that a little bit tighter, that execution rate did not extend to other operations and maintenance uh items besides personnel.
Right.
But where personnel was concerned, I, I think uh we're, we're trying to reflect a little more reality in terms of what has been historically a level of vacancy and then we're not in essence over budgeting in any given year for personnel. There's always gonna be some turnover, we have people retire, we have people take other jobs, uh, we have uh folks that, uh, you know, just, uh, you know, there's turnover. And yet, we all, all departments strive very hard to retain good talent and uh I'm very excited about the workforce that we do have and I think we're getting closer to uh filling some critical seats. And uh, you know, hopefully uh tha- that added capacity allows us to do a better job of providing those fullest range of services that you're alluding to, that the Mayor Council would like to see done.
Okay, I just wanna point that out as we move into next year's budget and I think it'll be good to reflect back on this, this moment in time where we're looking at it and how that compares once we have this new execution rate, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing any other, uh, Councilmember Schlegel.
Um, yes, thank you. On, on page thirty-eight, uh, the proceeds from sale of capital assets and equipment uh is shown as six thousand one hundred forty-one. Is that from, is that a subset of equipment that is sold or is that all equipment uh after amortization is accounted for?
Um, this is the net, the net sales proceed from the sales of uh, uh, the city property. And we listed it separately uh because this is the new, new way of presentation to show uh how much um property sale that occurred during that year. So uh, the net sale, um, you know, um, after the, the um, um, the deduction of the net asset value, we have six thousand one hundred and forty-one dollar in the net proceed.
Thank you. Um, another question I had was uh from page eighty-four. Eighty-four. Um, I was, I was looking at the uh, the, the fourth column where favorable variance or unfavorable placed in parentheses. Um, and it's, it's just interesting, I was trying to understand which things are easier to predict and which aren't. Um, I noticed that all the uh projections for shared taxes uh seem to come in with a favorable variance from the final appropriated budget. Um, as did the, even the real property tax came in with a slightly favorable variance. Um, with many of the smaller numbers, there were unfavorable variances and um, just for example, uh, one that jumped out at me was the, the cable, cable and hotel tax came in quite a bit lower. Uh, and fines and forfeitures came in quite a bit lower. Um, I, and business and property taxes came in quite a bit lower. I know that these are small numbers compared to millions, but I wondered whether anybody could speak to uh the challenges involved in making those predictions.
Yeah, I, I, I can speak to the cable uh TV franchise fee especially. Um, we were notified by uh the Montgomery County Cable Program Department um that our franchise fee in the general fund is going to be significantly much lower than the previous year, especially for fiscal year twenty-five. We used to uh receive around about thirty thousand dollars per quarter for the franchise fee, but last year we only received eight hundred dollars. So you can see the huge drop in the, especially in the Comcast cable franchise fee. Um, while the other franchise fee, for example, the RCN and also the Verizon is also reducing, but the reduction is not that significant, they are reducing around about seven percent per year. But with a significant reduction in the Comcast franchise fee, it really shows up in our financial report that, 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 that is a unfavorable, you know, variance because of the huge reduction of the ra- revenue.
I see. With some of the others, uh, such as the admission and amusement, which came in uh twenty-three thousand, uh, pu- almost, almost twenty percent lower than expected, is that a normal amount of a, of a mis- uh, a miss in terms of the projection? I know we only have that one business uh that it pays that amusement tax, I believe.
Um, that revenue usually fluctuates, um, especially when um during the, the time um, w- w- we, we do not have a steady um uh am- amusement tax received in fiscal year twenty-five. But I need to look back at the previous several years to see if the trend is a going, is a downward trend or whether it is just a, a isolated year that we received less amusement tax. But this uh, uh amusement tax, it's kind of usually fluctuate year from, from year. Um, so uh, I cannot tell this is a particularly bad year, um, but we have to do investigation to find out the actual trend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel, Councilmember Lammon.
Um, I wanted to ask a question about the execution rate that you were talking about earlier, uh, which has been very helpful to understand how that has um been factored in last year. And you mentioned that in fiscal twenty-six, we had approved using uh an execution rate for uh, for calculus of personnel matters. I believe it was eighty-five percent that was used last year, is that, is that number?
This is the first year we've had the execution rate, FY twenty-six.
Uh-huh.
And it's ninety.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four percent?
Yep.
Okay. And is that the number that we're looking towards for the upcoming fiscal year?
We're continuing to look at the historical trend and uh, we will, you know, it, it may be close to that, but it's too early to say with any certainty.
Okay.
Because we're gonna assemble data uh until, right up until the point that we would need to make a recommendation. I think we'll have a little more confidence with that additional data.
Thank you. And then when you were mentioning that it was for personnel in, in last fiscal year, um, you, that made me wonder whether you were proposing, you were thinking of proposing that the same idea be applied with respect to a broader component of the budget because um, as we were just learning here, the execution rate obviously differed significantly in other components of the budget too. Is that something that you're contemplating?
I am contemplating that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, seeing no more lights.
Thank you.
Really appreciate everyone for coming, um, for, for joining us this evening to talk about this important topic. Thank you, Timothy.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, thank you for having me. Everybody have a good night.
You too. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the police employees retirement plan actual val- valuation.
Thank you for having us, I'm Tom Vessetti and this is Jordan McLean, he's already stuck around to my left. Uh, we're the actuaries for the plan here to make the presentation. Now, this is a presentation of our July one, twenty-twenty-five actual evaluation, which is a snapshot of the planned assets and liabilities of July first, used to determine the actually recommended contribution for the twenty-twenty-seven fiscal year. Jordan's gonna walk through the presentation, but we happen to take questions either during the presentation or afterward.
Thank you, Tom. And I think Tom and I have kind of split past council meetings, but I think this is the first one where we're both in attendance to get both of us today. The structure of the presentation is gonna follow similar past year's presentations. We recognize the fact that Tom and I are in the weeds with a lot of this every day. We look at that results, but maybe you aren't. So um, a little bit of background or a refresher might not be a bad idea. Background, just in terms of the plan itself, um, the police employees, the city at Tacoma Park, about three decades ago, were in the Maryland State Plan. Two thousand and one, city decided they wanted to provide enhanced benefits for police officers. Rather than joining the state's LEOPS plan, the law enforcement officer's pension system, created their own plan and that's where we are today. The last bullet point there, we just note historical changes in our investment return assumption, that is, the assumption has the largest impact on our valuation results. Back prior to twenty thirteen, we had a, uh, investment return assumption of eight percent, twenty thirteen, that was reduced to seven point five percent, and twenty seventeen, it was reduced again to seven point two-five percent, and that's where we are today. Terms of the plan itself, what type of benefits does it provide? Police officers can retire after twenty-five years of service with a fifty percent of pay annual annuity. They can also, if they don't hit twenty-five years of service, they can retire early at fifty-five and fifteen years of service. Retirees after they commence payments get an annual COLA index, the CPI, but that's capped at a three percent per year in aggregate amount. Disability benefits are also offered if officers become disabled on the job before retirement eligibility. Officers do pay into their pension plan a mandatory seven percent of pay. And finally, there is a drop, a deferred retirement option program feature available in this pension plan. Into the valuation results, Tom mentioned, um, this is the July one, twenty-twenty-five valuation, it sets the actuarially deter- determined contribution for the twenty-seven fiscal year. The valuation, as Tom mentioned, is a snapshot in time, so we not only calculate a contribution, but we can also evaluate the plan through the lens of the funded status, simply the assets of the plan divided by the liabilities of the plan. You can see that second bullet point there, from our last valuation date to this valuation date, the funded status of the plan increased from seventy-eight percent to eighty-two percent. The contribution for fiscal twenty-seven, um, the city budgets the uh contribution as a percentage of payroll, you can see the fiscal twenty-seven number is about a two percent decrease from the fiscal twenty-six number, forty-three point one eight percent down to forty-one point one zero percent. Biggest drivers for that decrease in the ADC, turnover, we had three officers who had significant service leave employment before retirement eligibility, didn't forfeit their benefits, they just weren't able to start collecting right away. That was a gain on the liability side. It's a strong year for assets, that helped pump up the assets for the plan. We had payroll increases, a lot of the payroll increases actually came from hiring eight additional officers. So they don't quite have a liability yet, they just were hired, but they're included in the den- denominator of our ADC there. Take a look under the hood, like to look at the plan population that to help inform what we're seeing in our results. Um, the left column there, seven-one-twenty-four counts by status, right column, seven-one-twenty-five counts by status. You can see active um officers changed from thirty-four to thirty-eight officers. Um, there was some additional movement, there were eight additional officers hired during the year. Um, there is one active member in drop, I think they just left maybe this month or next month. Um, retirees has remained relatively constant, thirty-three and thirty-four. Terminated vested employees are those that are no longer working for the city but are due a benefit once they become, um, they age into their retirement eligibility. And finally, there are members who have left employment that aren't eligible for benefits but do have an employee contribution balance that should be refunded to them. Overall, you're looking at a change in that, the population for the plan from eighty-seven members to ninety-three members. Did mention, we have those eight new hires and payroll went up from about thirty, uh, three point three million to three point seven million, about a twelve percent increase in payroll. about a 12% increase in payroll. Similar increase in the active headcount, about 12%. Here's our funded status. This is where we break it down into the assets and the liabilities. The first line there is the liability increased from 33.7 million to 34.9 million. We do anticipate, excuse me, the liability to increase every year. These are pay-related benefits. Expect those liabilities to increase with pay. The second line there is the actuarial value of assets. We smooth assets for valuation purposes such that when the markets kind of go like this, the assets for the valuation stay a little bit more steady. We smoothed those over a five-year period. The funded ratio based on that smooth value of assets increased from 78% to 82%. See in line four, we show the market value of assets. And if you compare the 29.4 million for the market value of assets to the 28.6 million, you can see we've got about $700,000 in gains that have yet to be recognized in our smooth value of assets. So it'll be good for the next couple of years, some upward pressure on assets. And the funded ratio on that market value of assets basis is 84%. The experience analysis here, this is the actuary's favorite side. This is where we look at what happened versus what we expected to happen with our actuarial assumptions. We look at both sides of the equation, the liabilities and the assets. The liabilities, this is kind of the same three points that I hit earlier in the summary. We did have three officers leave that had significant service. That was a gain on our liability side. The COLA that the retirees received was 2.89%. We assume a 3% COLA, a little bit of a conservative assumption there. So it was a little, again, another little gain on the liability side. And then the payroll changes that I mentioned earlier. On the assets, strong asset year for fiscal '25. Our assumption is 7.25% for the return. The actual return on the market value of assets was 11.5%. And on that smooth value of assets, 8.3%, both of those beating the 7.25% assumption that we used. Just in summary again here, the ADC, the actuarial determined contribution compared to fiscal '26, 2% reduction in pay from 43.2% or 43.18% to 41.10% for fiscal '27. In the presentation today, we also have the GASB results. These go on the financial statements. Two, two big things here. GASB again is a snapshot in time. We have the pension expense that we get from the GASB results as well as the balance sheet liability that go on the financial statements. Show both of them quickly here on this slide. We issued this report to the city in August, use that same 7.25% discount rate. Liabilities and assets shown here for GASB, you have to show assets on a market value of assets basis. Liability is slightly different, it's a slightly different computation, but you're seeing same about 84% here as you saw on the funding results a few slides ago. The expense for GASB for fiscal '25, about 1.2 million. It was 1.3 million for fiscal '24. Emerging topics, as I mentioned before, the discount rate or investment return assumption is the most impactful assumption by far in our evaluation. We spend a lot of time on that. This is just showing a distribution of the return assumption for public plans across the United States over a period of time. It's kind of hard to decipher what you're seeing when you first look at this, but I'll try and explain it. Each year, or each column is represented by a year. And the size of each of the colored bars in the column represents the number of plans in that year that use that discount rate or that return assumption. So you see all the way to the left, back in 2001, that big blue bar, dark blue bar in the middle, 8%. Looks like that takes up maybe 50% of that bar. About 50% of the plans back in 2001, we're using a return assumption of 8%. Then you can see that distribution. What you'll see over time, capital market assumptions over the past two decades have come down. That 8% has kind of fallen off the chart. You see it's gone off the chart. And the median discount rate today, fast forward 25 years, is 7% instead of 8% with a handful of plans above 7 and a handful of plans below 7. But that's the trend over the past two decades, a reduction in those capital market assumptions. And that's really it. Any questions?
Thank you so much for this presentation. And I'm actually quite pleased with the rate of return, especially given as of late how up and down things have been. But quite frankly, the market has still been going fairly well, even though we may not experience it every day in real life. But in stock market land, things are going well. One question that I have, and it's not to belabor, but I feel like I ask this every year because our force is so small. And it seemed as if many of our officers, because we were undertaking this higher increase of younger folks, and it seems like our force is kind of moving a little bit more towards the younger, the younger age groups, like under 40. Are you anticipating whether or not, you know, we have some folks that may be eligible for, or at least maybe coming up eligible for retirement, but we have such a young or younger leaning workforce? Has there been any concern regarding the age distribution and the contributions that are happening, given that our force is so small, if my question makes sense?
It does make sense. We don't necessarily look at staffing in that way. We get census data once a year. We do track how the average ages of the population and service of the population changes over time. And we also do put together a scatter where we look at buckets of people based on how many years of service that they do have. In terms of contributions, you know, the more officers you have, the more money that you're putting into their pension plan. They're paying contributions, but also the city has to pay a contribution. In terms of the average age for the population, including those eight new hires that we received, last year, the average age was 41, and this year, the average age is 39. So reduction of about two years for them, those new, eight new officers that came in. Same, same similar reduction that we're seeing in the average service from nine years of service to seven years of service. In terms of officers eligible for retirement in the next couple of years, I'm seeing potentially four, five, six, maybe six different officers in the coming years, year or two, that will be eligible for normal retirement.
But that's not anything to be concerned about, the fact that we are gearing, we're trending perhaps younger, given that we have a relatively speaking small force, six or so maybe retiring within the next few years, which means we would likely bring in folks that might be a little younger.
From the pension perspective, I don't think that's, that's concerning. But from a workforce perspective, that could be a different issue.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Thank you. I noted that, you know, as Mayor Cersei said, the market value of the assets was up 12.7%. A lot of people are noting that the market has gone up because of what might be, turn out to be a big AI bubble with Nvidia and companies like that. I don't know what we're invested in, but assuming some major market correction, let's say it dropped 12.7% in, in this year. In a case like that, because of the, the smooth actuarial value, how significant would that be, like a one-year major market correction in terms of what we would need to contribute the following year to keep up?
Good question. So we use five-year smoothing and we assume, like I said, a 7.25% return. So if we're below that 7%, if even if we have a positive return, but it's below that, it's going to be a loss on the asset side. When we have a loss, we've got an amortization schedule. We pay down the unfunded liability. And that's paid down over 22 years. So under our five-year smoothing, depending on the size of the loss, we'll recognize 20% of that in the year that it happens and then the additional 80% in the next coming four years. But of that 20% in the amortization policy, you're taking, you're paying for that over 22 years. So depending on the size of the loss, it's kind of double smoothed on the asset side because the assets are the most volatile part of the pension plan. The liability is relatively stable from year to year. The assets we know can have these big swings. Now, if it's a correction rather than, you know, assets moving up and down, you'll see that increase in your contribution that's, you know, permanent increase for those 22 years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Lammon.
Just looking at it, the percentage of the liability that's fully funded now has gone up a few percentages since last year. And I just wanted to ask you to revisit the question that we asked you last year, which is, are we in the place that we should be for a pension plan of this vintage? And how many years on we are? Are we on the right track trending? You said last year, we had nothing to worry about in that regard, and I wonder if you would say the same this year.
Great question, and I would say the same this year. Tom's got the page pulled up that I was going to look at as well. In the full valuation report, it's page 35, we show the funded status over the past 15 years. You can see back in 2010, the funded ratio was 33%. Since that time, over the past 15 years, we've bumped that up to 82%. The plan has a very solid funding policy in place where we amortize this unfunded liability over 22 years, which is kind of right in the sweet spot. For actuaries, we look at different periods over, that we fund the unfunded liability, and that's considered a sweet spot that you're not recognizing too much too soon. You're paying it down over a reasonable, reasonable period of time. And the city has made their actuarially determined contribution each year, which will continue to drive up that funded status.
Thank you, Councilmember Lammon. Councilmember DeBala.
Yes, thank you for this. Every year you do it, I understand a little bit more of what you're saying. I have, I have a question on your slides. You have the 2027 contribution as a percentage relative to fiscal '26. Is it possible for you to give a dollar number at this point?
So we actually don't, I mean, in our valuation report, we give an estimated dollar number.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Sure. Yeah, so the estimated dollar number, I think, is 1.6 million. Give me a second.
Yeah, I saw 1.59 somewhere.
Yep, that's it.
In the full report. Okay.
That's the one.
That's the one. All right. But that's less than last year.
Well, it's more in dollars, but it's less as a percentage of payroll because we have eight new officers, right?
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the final questions. Thank you so much for coming out this evening. We really appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Have a good night. Okay, next item is the city manager FY '27 budget projections.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. My team and I are pleased to bring this budget forecast for FY '27 to the mayor and council. And I would like to walk through a few slides and happy to take any questions or entertain any discussion that you'd like to have. I want to begin by just saying that tonight's presentation, this is an early-stage forecast. It's not a preliminary budget. No tax rate is being proposed at this time. Many things, a lot of these numbers and, and projections may change as we learn more in the coming months about revenues, expenses. And importantly, as staff listens to feedback from, considering feedback from the community, employees and the mayor and council, all of this will go into forming the city manager's proposal, which would be delivered towards the end of March next year. We have a lot of input that needs to happen. But what we'd like to do here is provide some, particularly for the general fund, provide some baseline information. A lot of these are linear extrapolations, but we'll kind of walk through all of these. And I think there will be some valuable information here. Ultimately, and I'll remind the public that in December, the mayor and council will provide city staff with an FY '27 budget resolution, which will provide some very specific parameters for staff to consider as we are assembling next year's budget. So in this agenda, the agenda for this discussion, revenue and assumptions, revenue assumptions and outcomes, expenditure assumptions and outcomes. We'll talk a little bit about the projected deficit for FY '27, city council considerations and next steps. The purpose of this discussion again is to provide council with general fund budgetary context as the city prepares for the budget development process next year. Focused exclusively on the general fund. The projection assumes that the current level of service is to be maintained for FY '27. The reason for that is it provides a baseline during next spring's budget development process. Of course, the mayor and council may choose to deviate from that current level of service. Revenue assumptions. We have a little chart here that shows the various types of primary revenue that we receive as a city, property tax revenue, income tax, governmental and other. We are projecting for FY '27 an increase due to, in property tax revenue due to valuations of $771,000 approximately, a change of about, increase of about 4.5%. Okay. The total general fund revenue, we're looking at approximately 32.9 million, so almost $33 million in general fund revenue. This would represent an increase of 2.9% or just a little over $900,000 more from FY '26. So on the property tax, the total is 7, we estimate 17.8 million. This represents an increase of 4.5% or again, 771,000 from the current year based on an evaluation of changes in assessed property tax values over the last nine years. So we try to do an analysis and look at the trend in order to try to estimate an amount and an increase for next year. Income tax, another major source of revenue for the city. We're looking at a total of approximately $5 million. This represents an increase of 3% or about almost $150,000 from the current budget due to the anticipated impact on city residents due to the federal layoffs. So 3% is lower than what we've been doing. Projected increase had been around 5% in recent fiscal years. Just again, as a, to kind of signal our thinking and, and try to mirror our expectations where income tax in particular is concerned, we are utilizing a lower percentage than we normally would for income tax revenue. Intergovernmental, total of about 6.7 million. This represents an increase of about 1%, so it's pretty stable in the current year. Historically, intergovernmental revenue's been fairly flat. So we really don't expect to see any great change in FY '27 in intergovernmental. to see any great change in FY27 in intergovernmental. Other general fund revenues, total about 3.5, 3.35 million, and again, an increase of just about 1% difference. Increases in other revenues will be offset by the declining collections from cable fees, which was mentioned just a little while ago. Overall, total revenue, we're looking at approximately 2 point, projecting about a 2.9% increase in total revenue or a little over $900,000. Total general fund expenditures, let's talk about expenditures for a moment, including salary savings with the 6% execution rate. The, we're looking at general fund expenditures totaling approximately $35.4 million. This represents an increase of about 3.6% or 1.2 million compared to the current fiscal year. A 1.1 million increase in salaries, wages, and benefits, which includes $77,000 for the Maryland family, it's an employee parental leave program that we anticipate will commence during the next fiscal year. That would be a fee to the organization on behalf of our employees. A $608,000 decrease in capital expenditures, an estimated $600,000 provision for a citywide adjustment to the personnel classification and compensation based on an ongoing study. And that's just a very, very preliminary number. The study is still ongoing. And a $90,000 increase in other operational costs. So, these are some features with respect to expenditures. With respect to salaries and wages and fringe benefits, this represents, our projections represent an increase of 4% in salaries and wages based on the latest employment cost index of 4%, which the city has historically used, but may change due to ongoing collective bargaining process with two city unions. We also, this represents an increase of 5% for fringe benefits, a preliminary estimate based on 8% medical costs, market adjustment for health insurance, and a lower percent of payroll contribution rate for the city's police department pension fund due to high FY25 fund returns. Also, 2.5 FTEs funded by ARPA and FY26 are projected to be transferred to the general fund for the second half of FY27. We have, we have ARPA monies, the last of the funds, given the federal government's deadline. We are able to utilize that for the first half of the fiscal year, but the second half, there are 2.5 existing positions, these are not new positions, these are existing positions, that could conceivably be paid for with the general fund following the depletion of ARPA funds halfway through the fiscal year. Operations, again, from that baseline standpoint, a continuity of services approach. This provides a baseline of services that are currently in place for our residents. We are, with respect to operations, projected to increase by 3% to account for inflation. So, these are expenses necessary to provide the services that are generally beyond our control due to inflation. And we tie to the Core Consumer Price Index, which is 3%. So, that's how we arrived at 3% for an estimation. The CIP, Capital Improvement Program, based on the five-year, it's based on the five-year plan included and adopted by the Mayor and Council in FY26 adopted budget. The actual FY27 proposed CIP will likely include some changes. Without going through all of this, I'll just explain what it is. This is a chart, and it's available to you and to the public because this is posted on our website, this presentation. Expenditures by departments and also multi-departmental operations. So, we've, we've got some breakdown here. I think the important point is the total general fund expenditures, we're looking at an increase of a little over 3.5%. It totals $1,226,367. Departmental details and capital improvement projects are listed in the full report. Managing the budget deficit. The city budget forecast results in a deficit of 2.5 million, including salary savings. This current budget, FY26, I believe it was 2.2. Current total unassigned reserve balance projected for FY27 is 2.95. The city's policy is to hold 17% of general fund revenue in unassigned reserves. Based on the projected revenue for FY27, that would norm, that recommended amount would require 5.6 million. The city expects to transfer 1.1 million from the unassigned reserve balance to the Equipment Replacement and Reserve Fund, based on a review of that equipment replacement reserve balance and replacement items and recommendations in the 10-year financial forecast prepared by our consultant, financial consultant, Raff Telus. So, in the forecast, general fund total revenue, the change from last year, this year to next year, we're forecasting to be about 2.9% and for expenditures, about 3.5%. Here, we provided a table that we'd like to walk through with you. Projected unassigned reserve balance. In FY25, the unassigned reserve audited balance was 14.4 million. The FY26 adopted budget general fund deficit was 2.2 million. FY26, current fiscal year, the first and second budget amendments reflected, we tapped 1.4 million. The FY26 equipment replacement reserve contribution in this current budget is 1.1 million, as approved by Council. Also, the facilities, FY26 facilities maintenance reserve contribution was $150,000. Assigned reserve revenue contingency, 3 million. So, as Council may recall, in addition to the unassigned reserve, which we budgeted for 17% per the Council's policy, we had some additional unassigned reserves that we, as staff ultimately recommended and Council approved, be designated as assigned reserves. And that was approximately $3 million worth, and that was a hedge against uncertainty in revenues and uncertainty in a number of other things. So, we're going ahead and presenting that and reminding that that was, in essence, reserve money that was fenced off, so to speak. The projected general fund deficit is 2.5 million. Again, the projected ERR, or Equipment Replacement Reserve, contribution would once again be 1.1 million, which was the recommended amount by our financial consultant several years ago. The city achieved that last year in the current year, and we're presuming that we would try to achieve that again. So, the projected FY27 available unassigned reserve balance would be 2.95 million. The footnote that I have here, I want to kind of go back to that before I finish the final lines. So, going back up to the FY26 assigned reserve revenue contingency, early projections such as for income tax receipts, execution rate, which is salary savings, and red light camera revenue suggest that there is a reasonable likelihood the majority of these revenues will be largely realized or unspent. And this 3 million amount could be released back to the unassigned reserve for FY27. If this happens, the unassigned reserve balance will be above 17%. We will have a better projection during the budget development process as we progress through this fiscal year. So, we're trying to be transparent with respect to the assigned reserves versus the unassigned reserve, and yet, we're also not anticipating that we're going to need to draw down all of the $3 million that was set aside as an assigned reserve for various things. If that is the case, then, and there's, there's other ways to get to 17%. Of course, we can, we can look at spending and we can look at a number of other things. But these are just very linear projections based on information that we have in hand at this very early stage. So, for FY27, 17% of the projected general fund revenue, this is what it would take to get, the amount of, the dollar amount that we would need in order to achieve a 17% is 5.6 million. And that's that second to last line on the, on the chart. Presently, if we're accounting for the 3 million that's been set aside, the projected available unassigned reserve balance as a percentage is 9%. It will still be my goal to present a proposed budget that does achieve the Council's full minimum reserve level of 17%. And we, as I mentioned, we've got, I believe, a number of ways to get there, but we also wanted to be very transparent in that just running linear, from a linear perspective, looking at numbers as we have them at this early stage and without making adjustments, which will naturally occur in the development of the budget even before it's presented to you, in crafting the budget for Council's consideration, we're saying that it would be 9%. And that gives us our challenge, and that's, that's what we want to put that out there and say, you know, we will be working to make those numbers better. As a reminder to the Mayor and Council and the public, November 19th, next week, next Wednesday, we're planning for the financial forecast by our financial consultants, Raff Telus, preliminary results. So, that will be a presentation. Budget survey results, both the community and the Council's budget surveys will also be presented for your consideration and discussion. And then, you're scheduled for a Council FY27 budget priorities work session. So, hopefully, tonight's information, as well as the information that's coming from the surveys and the financial forecast, will be of use to you as you commence your first FY27 budget priorities work session. You will then have a second work session on budget priorities on December 3rd, and we're slated on December 10th. Hopefully, do have budget priorities, a voting session where Council can deliver direction to staff through a resolution. In March, the FY27 budget book will be published. The proposal will be produced and presented to the Mayor and Council in late March. I will present the proposed budget overview at that time. March and April will be department presentations of proposed spending and revenue, and the Council work sessions will occur in that timeframe. In the span of April through May will be voting sessions and also importantly, the series of budget reconciliation sessions that the Mayor and Council will have. That's just kind of a look ahead to the calendar, and I want to pause also to sincerely thank my team for their work on this, primarily Susan Chung, our Finance Director, Chief Financial Officer, and also Ron Qualley, who's also here, who's our, our Budget Director. So, I also had my City Management Office team with David and Asmara. Andrew also contributed, want to thank all of them for contributing to this work product. And at this point, unless Susan had anything else to add, we will stand by here for any questions or comments that you may have.
Great. Thank you so much to everyone who, who worked on this. I have a couple of questions. One, can we just go back to the unassigned reserve, projected unassigned reserve? Because it took me to put some lines in and do some math to figure out what's going on, right? So, are we saying, right, based on the, the audited balance for our FY25 unassigned reserve, right? That's basically the pot, right? That's how much we know. The, the FY26 items, are you, you're functioning under the assumption that all of those expenditures occur in their totality, right? And so, because of that, that would mean, so, there was a, a, a general fund deficit as a part of the adopted budget, there was a couple of budget amendments that came in a little over. We have already included in the, in the budget, the equipment replacement reserve contribution, and then the facilities maintenance reserve contributions.
Correct.
And, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear, that the, the other monies that are typically available for the equipment replacement reserve that we hold, that's a part of that unassigned reserve audited balance, is that correct, for FY25? Let me turn on your mic. Sorry. There you go.
So, the, this 14.4 million is the unassigned reserve balance only?
So, it would include like the equipment replacement reserve funds that are already there?
That would not include any of the equipment replacement reserve, emergency reserve, housing reserve, and all that. Does not include that. This is only for the unassigned reserve.
And so, for the FY26 equipment replacement reserve contributions, are we, are we saying that that would be an addition that's separate from what we, what we contribute? I'm just trying to think through the line items, right? So, we have the equipment replacement reserve, we have projects that we were planning to fund under that money, and then we made a contribution for the, you know, contribution in addition to, to the reserve, if that makes sense?
Yeah, the contribution to any reserve, whether to the housing reserve, to the equipment replacement, or to the facility maintenance reserve, all come from the unassigned reserve.
Unassigned reserve.
So, once, once you, you have to contribute to the different reserve, we need to do a transfer out from the unassigned reserve and going into, for example, the equipment replacement, the housing reserve. So, it will increase the other reserve, but at the same time, it will reduce the unassigned reserve.
Okay. I was just trying to make sure that I'm thinking through that correctly. And so, what we're saying here is that these contributions from the budget amendments to date, the equipment replacement reserve, the maintenance reserve, and even the assigned reserve 3 million were items that technically would be, would need to be pulled from the unassigned reserve bucket of that 14.4.
Yes, because the, the, the number that we started is the year-end number, the year-end number of fiscal year '25, and it does not include anything that we're going to expect to spend in '26. So, the, the subtraction, the number in bracket are actually subtracting from that original FY25 unassigned reserve balance.
And so, what, what the City Manager just walked through, and I'm sorry, everybody, because I just need to make this make sense for me. So, the, the general, what the City Manager just walked through in terms of projections for FY27, is we're saying, hey, y'all, because of staff for FY27, is we're saying, hey, y'all, because of staffing and all these other things, we're anticipating that the general fund is going to be at a deficit, right, of 2.25 million. And we still, as we've been talking about, need to make a, a contribution to the equipment replacement reserve. That's something that has been underfunded. So, we're projecting to be at a deficit of 3.6 million in FY27 to start. It is the adding of the FY27 projected general fund deficit of 2.5 million and the FY27 projected equipment replacement reserve contribution of 1.1. So, those two would be 2.5 plus 1.1. So, are we saying that those two get?
3.6.
Yeah, 3.6 is what we're talking about will, in essence, be in the hole. So, so are what you say, or, or, I'm just, and I'm just trying to make sure that I'm clear about this, because I would, I would assume that the equipment replacement reserve contribution for FY27, in my mind, might have been included as part of the general fund deficit for FY27, but I could be completely confused about that. So, are, are what we, are, are what we saying here, that we're going to not have, at least projected, we're not going to be able to meet the 17% projected general fund revenue unless we are able to realize, meaning not use, the 3 million that was in the assigned reserve, meaning like these points here. We, we don't necessarily have to experience the level of loss that we were anticipating with the income tax. We, we are not seeing losses in the way that we anticipated when we established in FY26 the assigned reserve. So, if that happens, if we say, hey, we actually didn't expect, you know, the bottom did not fall out, so we have $3 million to deal with, it's in FY26. If we don't spend it, it would ultimately go into the reserves for FY26. And so then, we would be in a better place. We would be at, I guess, 5.2.
9.5.
Yeah, 9.5. And that would have us at, and that would put us in a place where we would, we would meet the 17, we would exceed the 17%.
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely correct.
Okay. So, so that is, that is something that I do want to make sure, especially as we are having conversations with residents about the FY27 outlook, that that point is clear. And, and I know if it took me to talk out loud and kind of work through this, it means that it's, it may not be as clear if this is what we're trying to communicate to, to the layperson. City manager Despero, I see you're like?
Yeah, thank you. And you're making some good points. I just want to add that it's not necessarily exclusively not spending the 3 million. I think, say we spent 1 million out of that 3, there's other ways to get to the 17%, okay? There's looking at our spending plan, there's looking at, you know, fine tuning everything and as we get more data. But it's that ultimately, what we'd want to focus on is what is that projected general fund deficit in the first place and see if we can bring that number closer. And which means that we would not necessarily have to rely on not touching any of the unassigned, not touching any of the assigned reserves. It's not the only way. It could be a combination of things. And that will be part of what will, my team and I will be working on in developing the budget in the first place, because we, we do want to deliver one that meets the council's goals for reserve policy and the general fund. And there's several different ways to come at it.
Thank you for that. I, I mean, I, I always gripe about, hey, you have the first budget amendment, it's really hard because nothing has really come in. And similarly, when we are looking at these projections, it's always doom and gloom, because we haven't had the opportunity, like staff hasn't had the opportunity to sit down to try to think through creative ways to balance the budget. So, this just kind of shows that, you know, we're in the hole. And I'm just trying to make sure that we're providing folks with a necessary context so that we don't see on listservs all over, the city is completely defunct and we are in the hole, millions of dollars. And so, I, I do think it's important that we make sure that as we're communicating the budget forecast, that it is clear that it's, we're highlighting the challenges, but that staff will be working as you all are finalizing the budget to try to think through ways to address them. And one of the things that I noticed as well was the, the 2.5 FTE funded by ARPA and transferring them over to the general fund. One question I have is, to what ex, like, to what extent will staff be reviewing our vacancies to see whether or not it, it is necessary to add 2.5 FTE versus, you know, leveraging vacant positions and maybe re-appro, reassigning tasks so that we don't have to increase our total FTE count, but might be able to absorb those, those FTE in our current numbers?
I'm sorry. I do want to emphasize that these are presently in our complement of FTEs. It's just general, you know, what's the source of, of, of paying for them? So, these are not additional positions that are being rec, proposed. These are, in some cases, positions that have been around for a while. And we were using ARPA money for a period of time when we had the opportunity to, to, to fund them. And now it's just going into a different funding scheme. That being said, absolutely, we do scrutinize vacancies. And, you know, you might recall with the FY26 budget, there were some positions that we didn't fill. And I take that, that approach every time, every budget, to see if there isn't some way through, you know, creative job redesign and other adjustments that we could reduce some expense by not necessarily filling a vacant position. So, that, that's always part of our mindset.
Thank you. And, but I, I do want to stress that when we, when prior councils agreed to increase those FTE using ARPA funds, it was not the expectation that these would be permanent positions that would be absorbed into the general fund. So, I, I, I just want to make sure, you know, we have some great people that are, that are working using those ARPA dollars. It's in no way a reflection on them, but, but by just saying, hey, it needs to be transferred, you're in fact increasing our FTE count by 2.5, because they would have to be absorbed in the general fund.
In, in the general fund, yes.
Right. So, that would mean that we should probably definitely take a look at our vacancy rate to see whether or not there's an opportunity to reassign some FTE.
Yeah, because it is an, you're correct, because it is an expense issue. That's the, the smart thing to do. And, and we will look at that. I, I just wanted to reemphasize to the council that we aren't looking to create new positions. You know, if we're saying they're being added, they are being added from a funding standpoint, but not from a position standpoint, in the sense that we're saying, hey, we've got two and a half brand-new positions we've conceived of and we'd like to add them to our complement. In the last two years, the mayor and council has actually reduced the FTE count by a little bit, not increased it at all. And, you know, so, we're not really looking to add brand-new positions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hanzak?
Yeah, thank you so much. This was really, really helpful. And actually, the mayor started with my second question. If I could just maybe dig in on that one just for a brief moment, I know you've already kind of exhausted it, but it, it is, it was definitely my understanding when we got the ARPA funding, that we had 2.5 positions that were funded directly by ARPA funding in order to manage the ARPA funds. So, I know that at this moment in time, some of those FTEs or the roles that they have played have, have moved around. But I definitely was not, my understanding, be, having been on previous council, that in any shape or form, they would continue onwards after the ARPA funding had been exhausted. But I, I don't know that there's.
Yeah, to your, and I appreciate your point very much. You know, over time, another thing happens is that as demands on staff increase and just complexities and so forth, sometimes additional capacity over a span of time, like the last five years, where we've utilized most of that period, some ARPA funds. We were fortunate, like a lot of cities were, to utilize ARPA funds, outside money. But, you know, in, in, in a tough environment, where we're still trying to provide the level of services and meet goals and priorities, some capacity issues can arise over that period of time. And thus, it's, I think, appropriate to at least consider FTEs that might have originated when the only way, when our revenues were down and the only way we could have that capacity was to use ARPA. To a point where we land today, where we've got, we've got the added demands and, but yet, will we still be able to have the staff in order to meet those? It, it's just a consideration. At the end of the day, you know, of course, we'll, you know, staff will respect whatever council wishes to do with this, but I will be looking hard at vacancies and, you know, ideally, the idea is that, you know, we could net out so that we're not, through perception especially, you know, looking like we're adding positions. We're adding them to the general fund, we're not truly adding brand-new positions. But I understand the optics of it and, but also am concerned about, you know, these particular positions are ones that have brought tremendous capacity. It's positions that are in IT, finance, and in the city manager's office to try to achieve a level of productivity that will best serve the community.
It's not optics. You are moving FTE that we're using, that we're supposed to be temporary into the general fund. So, that's not an optic, that's a fact. And we are also looking at other increases that we're going to have to deal with, either through statute, because of the, the, gosh, what's the name of that bill? The one we have to meet. And we have the Family Leave Act, and we also have our council, our citywide personnel comp and class study. So, I'm, and we're in union negotiations. I'm, I'm just saying that there are increased personnel costs, many of which we are not going to be able to avoid, and that it would be prudent for, for city staff to really think long and hard about where those FTE within the, where they could be absorbed versus just moving the salaries permanently into the general fund. I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, no problem. All right. And then my, my second and last question is related to, on slide three, where you've spoken about increase of, of 3% assumption rather than the 5% we've seen in fiscal years. Would you mind just elaborating a little bit on what you based that on? I know this is very early days, but do we have any, is there any other, is there some source that we're using that others are also using, region-wide, or what, what are we, what are we thinking? Is it a bit arbitrary at this point? And that, that would be fair, honestly, because we don't have a lot of data yet.
Well, to be brief, it's a bit arbitrary. We have not yet seen any reduction in income tax receipts. However, we also know that there's often lag time with these sort of things. This was just a guesstimation. Certainly, we wanted to shoot lower than higher.
Yeah.
You know, the income tax actually last year exceeded what we budgeted in revenue, but we don't expect that trend to continue. So, what we wanted to be is try and be careful and aim lower and, you know, hope that we get, you know, at least that much comes in. It, it's also, I think, an acknowledgement, you know, to everybody that we do, you know, we do see a potential impact and that we understand people are, you know, some folks have tragically lost their, their jobs and their incomes, you know, or will in the coming fiscal year. So, that number can, can move, it may need to move further south. But we didn't, at this juncture, we can't base it on a trend because it wouldn't justify lowering it. But it's more of an expectation that that, that what we'll eventually see will justify it.
Thank you for the transparency. Appreciate it.
Thank you, councilmember Hanzak. Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, thank you. It may be that some of my questions have just been answered. So, I had, I think, three areas I wanted to hear a little more about in, after, not tonight, but to get more information about in the fu, in the future. And one more general question. So, the things that I wanted to get more information about after tonight, one of them was, was the tax, income tax assumptions. Same question that councilmember Hanzak had, but also whether there's a way to take that out another year, just to see what the impacts would be for the year after, because I've got my eye on the money that we saved and whether we're going to need it in, in the year after that. So, that's my first information request. My second one is, is, is similar. What was the reasoning behind the 1% decrease on intergovernmental? We don't get really any federal money, so why is that going down as opposed to level? And that's not something you have to answer tonight. That's a second information question for, for follow-up. And my third one had to do with, you're going to love this, the, the two and a half FTEs. I think it would help the discussion, since I know that we had budgeted for some temporary FTEs and also we had used some ARPA money for salaries of the people who were already there to cover, particularly in the last year, this past year. It might help if there was more specifics about, and I, and I wouldn't want to do this in public right now, but which positions we're talking about here. So, that's my third request. And my more.
I'm sorry, could I just, could you repeat your last one? Just, I just want to make sure I'm not missing it at all.
Yeah, so that you have, you're estimating a two and a half, two and a half FTEs. It would help to know which ones they are and whether they are positions. For some reason, the climate coordinator comes to mind, where we use some money that was ARPA to cover some of, I don't remember the details, but to, to see which positions they are.
Yeah.
And whether they were already positions that were already around and we were just using ARPA money to cover, or whether they were the temporary positions that we created. That would help.
Sure.
And my general question had to do with releasing the money, all of the money for the, the, oh, no, I know what it was. So, this is on page seven, slide seven. This is mostly about the general fund and a couple of other funds. Is that because you think that the other funds are going to be balanced out or maybe increasing, or maybe in surplus for your estimate for the next year? Or, or, because there's, you know, there's a lot of other funds and one of them at least is pretty big, that's the speed camera, et cetera, fund.
Most of the funds, other than the general fund, they are supposed to be self-sufficient. For example, the Stormwater Fund.
Okay, right.
The, the grant fund account, which is a special revenue, which is almost everything coming from the state grant and also the, the agency grants. And the other one is the red light camera fund. The red light camera fund, the, the fines that we have recently received has been increasing. And we're now in a more surplus condition than past year. So, we are a little bit more optimistic about these funds that should be able to hold and maintain the fund balance.
For purposes of a broad brush projection, that's why you skip them. That's really good to know.
Yeah, and I, and I can add that, and of course, we always use the opportunity to emphasize the purpose of the red light camera program is to increase safety, and it does. But we also have not, just as a point of information, we have not given any consideration to the additional lights that we believe are, we're in the process of being permitted for New Hampshire and university, which, you know, we believe will, will generate a certain additional amount, but we have kept that out of this, since those, those have not literally occurred yet.
Okay. This, I found this really helpful. I know this is very, back to the first thing that the mayor said, this is very preliminary. This is what happens if we don't do anything. And clearly, there are plenty of things that are under consideration to do. But it's really good to know, sir, what the worst case is, to the degree we know it. But it's really good to know, sir, what the worst case is to the degree we know it. So we could, it's very sobering to, to remember, to remind ourselves that we have some work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you. I'm looking at page four of the other, the, the non-PowerPoint document to ask my question, if you wouldn't mind. And that's the, looking, the projections. I'm looking at fiscal 2027 forecast, trying to understand under mental health counselors, looking at what looks like an intended expenditure of 300K and change. Is it our intention to be budgeting for that expenditure when our game plan is to actually seek other funding for that? To have it in our budget surprises me. So I just wanted to ask about that.
So I just want to confirm, I think this is a matter of contracting in that our current contract with the county to provide the FTE will go into part of FY27. But the hope is that we can continue to work with, because I think it ends, I can't remember when our contract with the county technically ends, but it's in FY27. And so the hope in working with the county and advocating with the county executive and staff is that they would be able to pick up the remaining costs for FTE through the, the remainder, like after our contract ends, through the remainder of the fiscal year. So it's a matter of the current contract that we have with the county for the mental health services and the fact that that contract, because it was delayed, goes into FY27, so we need to budget for our portion of that. But our hope is to make sure that we are working with the, the county to get the rest, after that contract is up, the rest of that funded. Definitely, city manager, deputy city managers, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is, that is what I recall.
Right. So-
Yes.
The number, if there is a budget number for us versus county money, in any event, it would not be the same number, it would not be, would it be 300,000 then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That would be the partial number?
That's the partial number. Because of the, if I remember correctly, the timing of the contract, it kind of ends right near the, the beginning of our next fiscal year. So I think that it's just the timing of the contract goes into FY27, and we are contractually obligated to carry that, that FTE forward. But it's going to end in FY27, and we want to keep those FTE on. And so that's why we're trying to get the county to also include the coverage in their budget as well.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you. So my other question is, is a terminology one probably. So when something refers to a 6% execution rate, that is the, the counterpart to the 94, it's a 6% non-execution rate or something like, I'm confused by that. Is that, am I understanding?
Rather than budgeting for all positions at 100%, we budgeted it 94.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
To account for positions that are vacant and we're not expending monies.
Thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Schlegel.
Oh, thank you. Just on that last mo, point about the ARPA and the mental health counselors, maybe we could make, make sure we have that, the date, the date clear, because I feel like residents have been asking that we negotiate for the county to include 300,000 in the FY27 budget already for this, as though if that request is what they're, what they think is needed, they're under the impression that it would be on our dime starting in FY27.
Madam Mayor, the 300K, or the 600K would cover the, both of them. That would be enough to cover both of them for the fiscal year, for fiscal 27s, right?
Right.
So that's why it's unclear why we would need the same dollar amount in the fiscal 27 budget for ourselves if we're seeking it from the county.
Can we have staff just follow up with, just send a, a point of information to the council after this meeting? Just remind us, I believe, I, I, my phone is broken, otherwise I would look it up, because I believe we've already received the contract for the county, and then that way we could see the period of performance for that contract. And then from there, because we, we, we would be obligated to make sure that we're budgeting, if I'm remembering this correctly, and given that it is almost 10 o'clock, I can't make any promises. But it is my understanding that because of the delays with the contracting with the county that occurred earlier this year to get it renewed, that to have that contract and the timing of it means that it's going to go into FY27. And then that means that there's this weird overlap between fiscal years where we, we have to cover some portion of, of the monies, and then we are trying to get the county to pick up to also cover once our contract is officially over. But it, it might be helpful to just make sure that that email goes out to council, just making sure everybody understands that.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, it's, it'll be good to make sure we have that straight. So I had one in, information question, which is regarding the county reimbursements for, I, I believe it's four major program department areas that we have, correct? Would it be possible for council to receive, just a, a simple accounting of what is projected to be received for each of those cost areas from the county up against the, the cost of those program areas? And I, that might not be just department, there might be some intergovernment, interdepartmental costs associated with those?
Those revenues coming from the county is called tax duplication. Every, every year, we, around maybe February or March, we usually receive information from the county to tell us how much we are expecting to receive. So this year, I think we are going to get some numbers like that before we actually release our proposed budget. So those, those numbers will be more accurate at that time. So right now, though, those numbers are just our estimate that we are expecting it to be flat, because we don't expect to have a huge increase. It will be just maybe 100,000, you know, the max.
Thank you.
That, that, that will, that will increase, yeah. So we don't want to overestimate some revenue that may not solidify in, in the future. So you, we usually do a very rough, conservative estimate for the tax duplication, but the actual number should come in around February or beginning of March.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my question is, I will put it in an email. My question's more about what, what the, so, what, how much we make up on our own compared to what we receive in tax duplication. So, thank you. My question, my, my questions are, and I'll be very brief. I noticed that in the, the comprehensive financial report, that it, it looks sometimes, when you see how much is still left over from the previous year, that fewer taxes could be collected the next year. But in practice, is most of that under, is a good portion of that understanding often passed forward via budget amendments? We've had two budget amendments so far, both of which were transferring monies that had gone unspent in the previous fiscal year. And related to that, do, do you foresee additional budget amendments this year? This forecast only, only includes assumptions about number one and number two.
Every year, we should have at least four budget amendments. And depending on the needs of different departments, we may have a budget amendment three and also a budget amendment four. But usually, the third and the fourth budget amendment amount could be significantly lower.
Okay, thank you. Another question, if red light camera revenue funds increase beyond the cost of the service, will the general fund allocation for the police department be reduced a commensurate amount?
Currently, I, I believe, based on my memory, okay? That-
For public safety, I mean. I know public safety is not just police.
Yeah, the, the revenue from the red light camera can be used for different various reasons. Because the speed camera is kind of a restrictive fund. We can only use for special, special purpose. But for the red light camera revenue, we can apply sometimes to use for the general fund capital expenditure. So as far as I remember, there are some row or street projects are being included in the capital improvement project in the red light camera fund account. So, yeah. So expenditures in general fund can be applied to the red light camera capital improvement projects.
Okay, yeah. Thanks for that reminder that it doesn't necessarily go to public safety anymore.
Yeah.
I just wondered whether those will be seen as windfalls or whether they're, whether they would be used to backfill needs in other areas, other cost areas.
I could add just a little perspective on it. I think it goes into the general fund as any other revenues like that, with the exception of things that are special revenues, like, like a speed, the speed camera fund was restricted. This was an unrestricted revenue. So we'll have, hopefully, some better notion by the time we bring a proposed budget to you, a, a more realistic idea of what we think the red light camera revenue will be. And it will be programmed in, since it would be anticipated to go into the general fund, we would utilize that to help balance the budget. It, it's not an enterprise fund, so again, it wouldn't just be to offset certain expenses in the police department. Could include some of the police department, but ultimately, we'd present a budget where it would just be part of the available general fund balance with which to construct the budget for next year. And then council can ultimately decide how to, how you wish to spend.
Okay, so would it, would you rule out creating a position based on, based on revenue from, from the speed, from the traffic light cameras?
You're asking if we've envisioned create, if revenues, if revenues from that exceed a certain amount where we're planning on adding a position? No.
Okay. My last thing is just a quick observation, I'm aware of the time. I, I noticed, I know that the assigned reserves, we were talking about those a bit ago, they were set aside for unknown contingencies, and we still have 7.5 months of really a world of unknowns. So I just wanted to urge us to hold firm and not begin to think of, of that there's this assigned reserves as money that we're going to have for next year. In fact, the, the three, the 3% projection for income tax revenue instead of 5% would seem to indicate the kinds of hardships that people have and the likelihood that we'll need to use some of that money for the kind of assistance that we'll be talking about later this evening.
Thank you. And Deputy City Manager, I hope he did look up the mental health counselors contract. It ends June the 30th of this year. So it ends at the end of FY26. And so I think the, the big question will be if we are successful in getting the county to include it in their FY27 budget, and we don't need to carry it in ours. If we are not successful, then we have a decision to make. Yeah. And because it is FY, because our contract ends at the end of the fiscal year, it is something that we will need to plan as we are having conversations with our, on our budget, and it could very well be the case that we don't know what their, what their final numbers are going to look like, and we may have to prepare our own. So.
Point of order. May I, may I just quickly ask, when would we hear about the mental health counselors, I don't know, usage rate or a report about that program? Will, is that something that will, that's on the agenda somewhere? Or is that something we could follow up about?
We can follow up offline. I believe that there was a, a document that was shared with members of council that had kind of outlined certain items. I believe maybe mental health counselors was on there, should have been a part of the conversation around public safety task force follow-up.
Yeah, I, I recall the chief had communicated, he was anticipating in the spring, we would have an update on the program.
Okay, okay. I was just curious if we would hear about it before the budget.
We should have enough data collected now that we've got two, and we have enough data by then in the pilot program to begin to share that with the council and the public.
Thank you.
But Madam Mayor, they are, they are actually under contract to the county and not to the city.
Correct. Well, we have a MOU with the, with the county in order to reimburse. So it, it does matter, because we have a, an arrangement with the county. We are providing funds to the county to reimburse them for the mental health counselors that are currently on their staff. So if they agree to keep them on board and provide them to us, not other places all over, then we don't, we don't need to do anything. If it is the case that they say, sorry, no, we're not, unless you all pay us, then we have to make a decision about whether or not we're going to add additional money into our FY27 budget in order to do that. Okay. Thank you all so much. We're going to move on to the next items, which are our voting sessions. The first item is the First Reading Ordinance awarding a contract for rent stabilization study. Thank you, Director Chang. It's 10 o'clock. All right. Perfect. So the First Reading Ordinance awarding a contract for a rent stabilization study, just want to check to see if there's any staff updates on this item before we move into the vote.
No staff updates on this item.
Great, thank you. I just want to remind my colleagues that for this item, we've allocated 10 minutes. Would someone like to move the First Reading Ordinance awarding a contract for the rent stabilization study? Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Dibala's move, Hansak seconded. Are there any points of discussion on this item? Councilmember Schlegel.
Yes, thank you. Colleagues, I would, I would like to propose that, that we all take a, a look, a comparative look at the proposal that came in from Urban Institute. I saw that it was second highest rated, and when I was able to access it and take a look, I was, I was impressed that it seemed thorough. I'm not questioning the three staff, the three-member staff panel, but this is ultimately our study that we're doing, and I, I think it would be good and responsible for us to take a look at that one. I thought it was thorough. I thought it focused on, as a starting point, our housing and economic development strategic plans, objectives. I felt that it made a very clear path through its methodology to explore the multiple trade-offs that you have to consider with a rent stabilization program. And I felt that they were locally experienced, having, having done work in, I believe it was Alexandria and with Prince George's County, and were locally based. So before we, before we go farther with the RSG, I felt like there were some good questions to be asked and some good, some good deliberation available for us about the Urban Institute plan. It might, it might help to clarify exactly what we're looking for.
I just want to remind my colleagues, I did share some information regarding section 7.08 dot 060, which is the section of our code that outlines how competitive seal proposals are handled and the city's contract procurement process. I think it's really important that we adhere to the process, which includes confidentiality, making sure that proposals are being evaluated based on the evaluation factors and the methodology that's outlined in the RFP. It is, quite frankly, in my view, really problematic from a contracting perspective for council to try to get in the business of not being a part of a evaluation process, panel process per the contracting procedures that we have in place, and trying to play Monday morning quarterback. It, it subjects us as a council. There were a number of proposals that were sent forward. Our staff had to review all of those proposals using the rubric that we're- Our staff had to review all of those proposals using the rubric that were developed. We are well within our rights to say that we do not support funding this contract, but it is not appropriate for us to come along after the fact using a separate rubric that is not outlined in the RFP process to, to, to second guess or to reevaluate proposals. I, I feel very strongly about that. I think it subjects us to risk, legal risk, for, for folks who have submitted proposals to us that maybe we're not talking about in this way. There are some confidentiality components that are a part of our code as it relates to contracting procedures and protocols. And so I, I feel very uncomfortable with council in an open meeting deliberating on, on proposals that we were not a part of the review panel, we were not provided any of the additional information that our review panel was provided. In my view, it's inappropriate. So, I mean, again, we, we have a decision here as council. We can ask staff to give us additional information about their rationale. We can, members of council can vote against making the, the award. But I do not think it's appropriate for members of council to get in the business of trying to assess the merit of the proposals that were given to us and not the merit of all of the proposals that were provided. If we're adding locality to the criteria that was not something that was outlined in the RFP, that would mean we're adding new evaluation criteria. That would mean we would need to throw this thing out and go back out to bid. So I think it is really important that we adhere to our contracting procedures that are outlined in our code. So, so we have a decision to make. That decision is whether or not to fund. But I don't think that it is appropriate for council to, to think that we can basically replicate the, what the evaluation panel has done or what they have described in the RFP.
Thank you for that, Mayor. I really appreciate that clarification. I, I would then say that I, I would like us to learn more about the evaluation process. We saw numerical scores, but that was all we saw at this point.
With the, and I, and I just want to stress that I know that our HCD staff has provided this council with multiple, multiple opportunities to sit down and answer questions, to make sure that everyone understood what was going on. And so I, I just want to note to my staff, well, note to members of council that if, if you're bringing these types of things up and you have not taken advantage of the various sit downs, I just want to encourage folks to not do that in the future. Because I do think it's really important for us to make sure that we're respecting our staff's time. So Director McNally, please go right ahead.
Sure. For this topic, I would just like to say that I did ask about this exact same thing last week. And so I invite you about the evaluation and the benefits of, the merits of one versus of the other, of the two topics.
Yeah. So with the RFP process, I'll just run through it really quick. We brought forth a scope of work back in June. It was given feedback by council. And then based on that feedback, we revised that scope of work, put it into an RFP, which was released in July. We had an information session in July, later in July, that was attended by some firms. The, we extended the RFP in August to the October 1st deadline and then reviewed it from there. So our panel of three, which included myself, Deputy City Manager Eubanks and Deputy City Manager Hapti, reviewed all four of the responsive RF, or the RFP responses, and then scored them individually. And they were out of 100, broken down by the different criterion. And so essentially, what you got was the weighting was based on that criteria in descending order. So the highest was that approach and the lowest was, I believe, cost. I don't have the bullets in front of me, so I will apologize if the, it wasn't quite like that. The scoring then guided our discussion about how these RFPs landed. As you can imagine, when you have three people reviewing it, you know, the scores are not uniform across the board. Each person is bringing their own experience with various different processes, programs and contract experience to the board. That said, there were two responses that did stand out and one that we thought was a very thorough response that also showed a depth of experience with rent stabilization and was ultimately viewed, given the price differential, as the best value to the city. I will note, the mayor makes a good point that we did not consider locality in the RFP criteria. We were looking at expertise, their approach and their qualifications, and then similar projects that they've done. And so that's how we landed with RSG.
Thank you. Councilmember Landman?
Yes, your point is well taken, Madam Mayor, that there is a process and that it was followed and that questions were asked last week. I think we, we got some responses and then we had an opportunity to review all the proposals. So things were taken in order. I think that, that, that issue of locality is important and perhaps next time, we will keep in mind that question. The fact that we discussed it last week and the answer that we received was that this would be done virtually, all of it, almost all of it, and that the staff was going to be stepping into the role of working locally, not the consultant, which was a very surprising response, actually. But that, I'm just going to set that aside and say that, that, that one of the points that was made today by a person in the audience that I think is a very valid point is that we initially set aside a limited amount of money to do this study. Everybody that came in with, with bids, three of the bids, or two of the bids exceeded the amount available. One of the bids exceeded it by a significant amount more than the other. And the highest bid is the one that, that we are, that has been proposed to be accepted. And that in and of itself is a significant disadvantage of the bid that is on the table. And that is something that I'm weighing, that I am very much weighing in my decision about how to vote on this. And I, you know, having read the, the proposals and having read the, you know, our RFP and the responses, you know, I may take away a different, you know, result from what the panel did, but that, I think, is in and of itself, the cost of the proposals is a significant factor. So that's the way I'm, that's another factor that I'm taking into consideration in deciding how to vote.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the RFP itself. Councilmember Schlegel, and it lists the evaluation criteria in it.
Thank you. If I could clarify, when I mentioned the local expertise, that was not so much about their physical location, but about their experience working in this metropolitan area, such as with Prince George's County's rent stabilization program, all of which is quite different from the situation in California.
And very new. And very new.
Yes, and very new. I would also like to say that I did, I did ask last week for copies of the proposals so that I could better understand. And then I did ask the city manager on Sunday for more information about how the evaluations were done. On Monday, when I spoke with the city manager, he said that I should speak to the director, Director McNally, and my time did not permit me to do that until just now.
No, I totally understand, but I do want to remind everyone that staff has been requesting folks to sit down for briefings for the last two and a half weeks. So again, I don't want to belabor the point, but I do think it's important for us to make sure that we're allocating the necessary time for these kind of important discussions. Councilmember Westle?
Thank you. I just want to share one aspect that I'm looking at all of this from. I'm so appreciative of our staff. And to me, part of this is trusting that the right people were around the table and making that decision. And that is their role. And our role is to say yes or no, or point out if there is something flagrantly out there. So I, I don't, I worry sometimes about these conversations and how it might affect staff morale because I think that staff is working really hard and doing a lot of really good things and doing so many things we ask of them. And it's, it can be tough if it feels like you're being second guessed all the time, or sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to be mindful of the fact that it is after 10 o'clock. Councilmember Schlegel, did you have another point? I would prefer to call the vote.
I just wanted to say that I didn't mean to hurt staff morale. I just felt like this is a very important issue for our city. And if I went about bringing this up in the wrong way or on a bad schedule, I will try to do better in the future. I, I don't, you know, if I'm, when I'm, when I, I'm a teacher, so when I'm, if I have a project assigned and a student, one student is afforded many more hours to do the work, it, it, it stands to reason I might score their work higher. And so I do note that, assuming these companies charge about the same rate, that the two companies that are charging more were rated higher. So I know that in the evaluation criteria, that was all taken into consideration, but it would be interesting to find out what RSG could do for $85,000, which would put it on a par with one of the other bids and with our budget.
And I just want to remind again my colleagues about our procurement code. If we are asking one firm to come back, that means we have to ask everyone because it is important for procurement equity. And, and I've shared that information with all of the members of council in an email calling out the specific section of the code, which explicitly calls out aspects of confidentiality, equality, as well as the need for us to adhere to the evaluation criteria that is communicated as part of the RFP. And so with that, I'm going to ask for the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Landman?
Nay.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
No.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Abstain.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Westle?
Aye.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
So first reading, I just want to make sure it passed. I always get tripped up with the abstains. All right, so we're going to move to the next item, which is the first reading ordinance approving use of unassigned reserves to fund immigrant support services. Are there any points of discussion for this item? I just, I'm sorry, I've, I've meant that for staff. Staff, are there any points of discussion on this one before we move it?
No, there is not.
Okay, all right, would someone like to move it?
So move.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala for seconding. Any points of discussion on this one?
May I? I just want to say thank you to the staff. I made some introductions based on the issue about immigrant services and the connections with schools. Whether or not it relates specifically to, to how the funds get utilized, I was very pleased that I immediately saw that the staff reached out to the various resource persons from our community schools at Blair, at Tacoma Park Middle and Silver Spring International Middle School and Rolling Terrace. So thank you, Mr. Director McNally and Ms. Hapti for taking that action.
Councilmember Landman?
I actually didn't mean to have my light on, but I'd like to add to that list a thank you to the staff who responded to some analogous outreach to Tacoma Park Elementary, which had a similar situation. And I think this is a really great step in the right direction and I'm very grateful to their work.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel.
Yes, I just wanted to also echo that thanks to staff for their, for their hard work on trying to make this happen in a timely manner.
Thank you very much. And I just want to also echo the appreciation to staff and all the hard work that you all have put in. It has been really appreciative and I know that this is the first step, but I'm pretty sure that there's going to be additional work going forward. So thank you all so much. And so with that, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Landman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Westle?
Aye.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
All right, we're going to go to the next item, which is a single reading ordinance approving the purchase, installation and service of new council dais. Would staff like to provide any updates on this one? Let me make sure we got your mic going. There you go.
Oh, someone was tall. So I, we sent some, we sent the latest staff report and I believe Deputy City Manager Hapti has, has discussed personally with each council member the latest outstanding questions and responses to those questions with council members. But if there are any additional points of discussion regarding the dais, I'm happy to answer them now.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes, I appreciate the outreach from Deputy Hapti and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. That said, I am struggling with this particular vote. I'll just lay it on the table for a number of reasons. It just strikes me as a very large dollar figure, the $65,000. And I understand it's a custom design, but I'm having trouble with that. I'm wondering two things. If I recall correctly, we, we, did we get two other rebids? I'm sorry, it's been a few days. I just added that question to my two questions.
We haven't bid for this.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, yeah. So I was, I was wondering, would it be possible to get at least two other bids? That's one question. And my other question is, could you elaborate? Because if I recall correctly, Deputy Hapti wasn't sure. Is there anything else that we could potentially purchase with cable monies either now or if we rolled these funds over to the next fiscal year?
Yes, so to, sorry, tilted. To answer the first question, it would delay the process if we were to go out and that was part of the reason why we wanted to go with the current vendor as a continuation of their current work and the current auditorium and audiovisual work that's been going on with the control room and auditorium. Human Circuit, the vendor who would be doing the work, came to us, came to us with a proposal that was under budget and that, and seeing as they are continuing, seeing as this seems like a natural continuation of their current work, we thought it would be the natural fit. So that was the reason why we weren't looking to go out to bid on this item. If we were to, and let me just back up to the, to the second question. Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Is there anything else that we could potentially purchase with cable monies?
We would have to reassess. It would have to go towards audiovisual needs and, but it would, again, we'd have to go through a process of reassessing what the needs would be for.
Then let me just, let me, given your responses, just one more thing, Mayor, if I may. On, on the Human Circuit document that, you know, that this sort of one that has the diagrams, on the last page, I mean, one of the things that caught my eyes when I look at this $65,000, which just seems, I know it's under, under the $85,000, but already that just seemed very, very high. And again, I wasn't here when this was all started, I guess, or maybe I wasn't paying attention. But the, the project management and project supervisor are budgeted at, or the price is $4,800 for project management and $3,900 for project supervision. I guess, to me, that seems overwhelming for a project of this scale, which we're just talking about putting in a dais. Can you speak to why there would be management and supervision for a project? Can you speak to why there would be management and supervision for a project of this scale and magnitude?
I can't speak too much to the specifics, but what I can say is, in the scope of work, it is, along with the custom design of the dais, there's also the service and cabling that needs to be done. And the cabling is pretty significant work. And one of the questions that has come up is, can we do only the cabling, which is still, would be a considerable dollar figure, and it would be a considerable, considerable amount of work? Now, we don't have a quote for that, but it, there is a lot of work that goes into both creating the dais, installing it, and then making everything work in conjunction with what's already in place in the auditorium, so that it functions correctly.
Okay, I'll leave, I'll pass it to my other colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. I do just want to address one of your questions that was raised, and I just want to make sure staff definitely correct me if I'm wrong. We've used cable grant funds in the past. There was quite a bit of cable grant funds that went into the new library. Funds went towards things like our computer lab, upgraded technologies within the library. We've used cable grant funds to help support it. I know that this came up during ARPA about the Chromebooks that we can loan out during, in the library. I know that that was something where there was a question about broadband access and how we may be able to use it for that. So I, I just want folks to know that we have used these funds in an exhaustive way in, in areas where it has direct resident connection. So I don't want people to think that we're just hoarding these dollars for the purpose of a dais. These dollars have already been used extensively to make upgrades to community assets that benefit the residents. And I do just want to remind folks about, and I don't want to pick on Councilmember Dubala, but Councilmember Dubala is sitting on what I could only call a fire hazard. And because, I'm glad that you are short, because of the number of cords that are, that is under her seat. And we've had issues where unfortunately she has kicked a cord that has knocked out more than once, where she inadvertently kicked a cord that blocked out all of our monitors. So I don't want there to be a, a, a thought that this is just a vanity project. We do have hybrid meetings. We do use a lot of technology in order to support our meetings. I need tech to, to facilitate these meetings. So making sure that it works really is important.
And most importantly, there's a safety concern too with the setup. The city, city staff who are putting the dais together, it is, if you, if you see them actually in action, the dais is lopsided. And so you have to be very careful to keep it upright, or else it'll tip over. So that's all, that is the biggest, that is a big concern for me, at least with, with city TV staff. But that is one, one of the major considerations for that.
Councilmember Dubala?
As, as one of the people who created the problem here, but quite seriously, I, I'm not crazy about this project. I think everybody knows it. But the, but the revised write-up makes the reasons, I think, really clear for me. And as to other uses of the money and what was identified as needed, it says here that the committee identified three things. The tech, the, the technology steering committee that the city has. The auditorium lighting, which we now have, the upgrade of the control room switcher, which was sorely needed, and, and the dais. And if I've got this right, it's not about the dais, it's about the technology. And the dais has, has to be replaced in order to make the technology work. So for me, that's a pretty powerful argument. And then the other thing that works for me, that is persuading me to vote for this, despite some of my issues, is, is anything that saves staff time, especially late at night, and saves the, the overtime dollars, but mostly saves the staff wear and tear at that hour of night, is really important to me. So I appreciate the, your answer, addressing the questions that I raised in these bullets and in some of the detail. And for me, it's persuasive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dubala. Just want to, Councilmember Gilbert, I saw your hand.
Yes, ma'am. It was, but Councilmember Dubala touched on something that I wanted to mention, which was the, the, the fact that we did have additional staff in after hours. And I had, I had the question as to whether or not the new structure would need to come down after every council meeting, and would it require additional staffs? But it's, it sounds like that's not going to be the case.
So I can speak to that. It would, it would still follow the same process where it'd be, it would come up and down with each council meet, each council meeting and public meeting, as this is, you know, there's lots of uses that we use the auditorium for and the auditorium stage for. But one of the good things about the new council, the new dais designs is that it's a lot more mobile and should save a lot more time and should be a lot, much more safe for staff to put together, and also increasing the connect, connectivity of it. As you can see, it's, they aren't connected, they're kind of just pushed together. So the new design also allows for that. So there's a, a lot of kind of those connectivity things that are also going into place.
And no additional staff is required.
No, no, yes. No additional staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Landman?
You've mentioned, you know, the speed and the convenience. I mean, do you, have you got any rough estimates of how much time it takes you to put together and break down the system each, each night? I mean, we're often, I don't know that everybody is aware of just exactly how late we are here, and that, and then how much later you are, your staff is here, but maybe you could tell us how off, how long it takes you to break down, what your estimate might be, or how much time it might save you, and if, and maybe there's a dollar number associated with that that, that would help us to figure out what the savings would be.
I haven't timed it, but I believe, I think from the conversation, they said around 30 to 45 minutes setup. I'd have to confirm that with staff, though.
Right. Yeah, the primary advantage isn't so much whether it saves some time, it's about safety. It's about, you know, a chance that employees can be hurt working on this, and let alone anybody who's sitting here with electronics such as they are under here. I think safety really looms large here, much more than a kind of a time consideration.
Thank you. Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes, thank you. Can, can you explain how each of these, these modular components would tip? What is the, what is the risk of the tipping?
Yes, so they're-
Are they top-heavy or are they-
They're top, they're top-heavy. So when you, when you're actually pushing them, and I tried this the other day, when you're actually pushing them, when you're pushing it, they are falling, they, they will tip this way. So staff have to be really careful not to, you know, not to push it, not to push it the wrong way. What I will say is, we have very, you know, we have very experienced staff who are doing this every week and are doing it, but are also doing it at, often late at night. As you can see, we have council meetings that go till, you know, 11:00 PM or later. And if we ever had, you know, needed somebody to come fill in, there is definitely a concern there that an inexperienced person who would be pushing these things that are top-heavy and there might be, there might be safety concerns there.
It sounds like it, it might be inconsiderate that we continue to sit and talk, you know, in small conversations after the meeting ends in this spot. We should probably think about vacating the area right away. I, I had one other question, which is, I know that one of our council priorities for this term that we've expressed in terms of the, the small community grants is workforce development. And is it possible that cable franchise grant, cable funds could be spent for any additional equipment, perhaps in the rec department, that could aid people in workforce development or developing different job or occup-, you know, skills? This is something that I think that some of the youth would be interested in as well.
Can I, I'll take that. This is a highly technical job to assign this to youth, an apprentice program. It's just-
No, I was talking about if we didn't spend the cable money on this, is there anything else that it might be? This is similar to the question that was asked earlier, but I think Councilmember Hanzak?
Again, this is grant money. It's got specific uses. It's got, it's got restrictions. We are using it in accordance with the grant restrictions. Again, this isn't like general funds where there are no restrictions. This is, this is more to, more akin to federal dollars that have restrictive uses. I don't know how else to emphasize that this is cable grant money, and we have used it in the past for related work. We've updated the, the control room, we've updated the lighting. This is the second phase. Again, this has been planned for quite some time. The only reason we're coming to you now is because the library is completed. So I-
Was any of the cable grant money used for the library project?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I thought. Okay. So it wasn't just, hasn't just been used in this area?
Well, related though, related, like related to audiovisual.
Yeah. Okay. That was what my question was, audiovisual related things that might be used in the rec department, or filmmaking projects, or audio recording programs, things like that.
Yes, and we have done that. And so, again, this is the next phase of what we had planned for, starting in 2018.
Okay. And do these funds go away if we don't use them now?
Do these things go away?
Do these funds go away?
I'm sorry, what?
Do these funds go away if we don't use them by a certain date?
Ryan, do you know the answer to that?
No, I mean, we'll, we'll have the funds. Originally, this was planned for FY '27. The reason why we're, we did the budget amendment to get it moved to FY '26 was because we felt now was the right time since the library construction work. So, you know, we could, you know, we will have these funds later on, and we had originally planned for that, but we moved it for this reason, knowing that we were in the stage of the process. Thank you.
And I do just want to make sure, because there are, I'm sorry. I have to stop this. Sorry, I have to keep us on track. It's my little timer to let us know we're at time. I do want to stress that these funds can be used for AV, it can also be used for tech, broadband expansion and the like. And, and so we have used these funds. So for example, it was mentioned about the library, we, we did use multiple times cable grant funds to help with the wiring, but also to help with procurement of technologies. And as was mentioned earlier today, earlier this evening about the cable franchise fees and those kinds of things, you know, we're going to start to expect to see some aspects of these funds decrease over time, but it's not the case that you, once we spend them, we'll never get them again. As of right now, we still be accruing these types of funds. So if there are programs that are developed later on, I'm sure that our staff will continue to look at ways in which we can use these cable grant funds to support.
And it might be important to note as well, there are still a significant amount of cable grants available. So if there's an identified need, and we can, you know, we have different cable grant identified, and if there's something that city TV communications department can assist, can assist with and identify need, then there is still cable grant funds available.
Okay. So with that, we're going to move to the vote. Would the clerk please, oh, did we move this? No. Would someone like to move the single reading ordinance approving the purchase, installation, and service of a new council dais?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Weselak. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Any additional points of discussion before we move for the vote? Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Okay.
Councilmember Weselak?
Aye.
Councilmember, but I'm going to be confused when I do. Councilmember Hanzak?
No.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Schlegel?
No.
Councilmember Dubala?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman? Mayor Circe?
Aye.
So how did that one go?
Two nos, one abstain.
One abstain. So the same as last. Okay. So it moved. Okay. Now we're going to move to our work sessions. Yay. All right. All right. I don't know, has Ann joined us?
I bet she has.
She has. Excellent. And Ann, you thought that you would go on at 8:30. What? I'm appreciative of the dispensation to be able to join you virtually tonight. Okay. So, uh, one of the things that I do just want, I'm hoping that this could be relatively speaking, a, a, a quick one, but definitely want to make sure that we are discussing things. So, Ann, we're joined by Ann Seacott, who is our lobbyist in Annapolis and has been working diligently to help us with working towards putting together a, a draft of our legislative priorities document. And so what members of council have, have received, and after our meeting, want to say, was it two weeks ago? I don't know, I'm blanking. After our last meeting on this topic, we talked about some, some legislative items. We also talked about kind of having them on paper. And so council, after that meeting, received a document that kind of outlined the legislative priorities. Everyone should have received a hard copy of that document that has been revised. Just to give you all a little bit of an overview in terms of the adjustments that were made to the document. So the document consists of three sections. The first is the proposed capital project, and those are the ideas that staff has put forward in terms of shovel-ready projects that we might be able to get state funds or, what is it, LBI, funds to support. The second section are the legislative items, and those are the items that, based on the conversations that were had, that we think may need a legislative action in order to implement. And then the last section is the advocacy support items. And these are the items where they are things that we need support on, but we're not exactly sure right now whether or not there's a legislative change that's needed. It may require us working with our District 20 delegation to help us with having conversations with, with WSSC or PECO. It could also mean follow-up and additional conversations with the AG's office around interpretation of sensitive locations, and whether or not we already have certain leeways that exist that would allow us to, to, for example, consider food distribution locations as sensitive, sensitive locations. We don't know for sure whether or not there's a legislative change that's needed. There's going to require a little bit more interaction with District 20 and with state staff to confirm, but wanted to just make sure that, that some of these things were pretty clear. So I'm just going to run through really quickly. There's a couple of questions that I still have that might be useful for us to discuss. I know that there were some members of council that asked about why, in terms of Section 1, why we were moving forward with the Metropolitan Branch Trail and the new AV bikeways. The priority, at least from staff's perspective, and what we think we might be able to sell, is the Metropolitan Branch Trail item. I still kept both items here, just so that we would, you know, it's important for D-20 to know, but it's also helpful for us to make sure that we're giving them our preference. The, the thing about the capital projects is you do need something that is shovel-ready. And just as a reminder, we've, we've received funds in support of the library, we received funds in support of the public work. I believe we've received funds previously for- I believe we've received funds previously for the mental health space downstairs. So our major capital projects have already received some funds. And the, so right now, we have these two transportation projects that are shovel-ready. Councilmember DeBala?
Good question about that. So will we put both of them in? Because I'm not sure I understand why the Metropolitan Branch Trail would bump the new AV bike project, which has been going on for so much longer.
So...
What if we put them both in and let, and see what happens?
Well, Ann and I know we talked at length about, because they are very, they're transportation. I mean, I think at the state level, they're just going to see transportation. And so the reason why, and definitely staff can chime in, while the Metropolitan Branch Trail went over the new AV bikeways project is, in my view, it's a low, overall lower dollar amount, which means it's more, proportionally, it's not as much as what would need to happen for the new AV. And for me personally, I think new AV is a little harder of a sell because it reads a little bit more like, why aren't you going after DOT funds for this? So, so my two cents was Metropolitan Branch Trail had a smaller, more locally kind of feel to it, which could not cause people to immediately say, why aren't you going after other sources of funds for this? And I don't know, Ann, if you have any feedback on that and based on what you've been hearing in terms of floating the items.
So I, my guess is that the D-20 team will want to do one. I don't want to speak for them. We can ask them if they will actually do two. They may want to sort of discuss exactly what you're talking about, Mayor Cersei. Are there other options for either of the projects? So I think we just need to discuss that a little more with them and see what they think, as you said, is more sellable, something that they're going to be able to be more successful getting money for. You know, we got some updated revenue numbers today in the General Assembly. And, you know, it's worse and we knew it was going to be worse. So I think they may want to only do one of them.
And so just as a reminder, what I'm hoping to do, while this document is pretty complete, what I'm hoping is that we will put forward a vote on a resolution just to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of the legislative items. And we won't include the capital projects that we're planning to put forward, but it will focus more on the legislative, the legislative items. I could be swayed on being broader, but I just thought it would be cleaner to just keep the resolution to the legislative items and note that the council is also going to be seeking help regarding bond initiatives and other types of advocacy support. So for the legislative items, we have good cause eviction. The SNAP support item that was discussed before, and this was one where it's, hey, is there a possibility to expand what programs like the Maryland Money Market Program to give extra funds to SNAP benefits to purchase fruits and vegetables at farmers markets and also grocery stores? The protecting gender-affirming care in Medicaid. And I know Councilmember Wesselak has been having some conversations with different advocacy groups about that. Prohibit law enforcement participation in ICE 287-G program. I know that's a priority for CASA. That is something that we have been, that we submitted last year. Protect Maryland residents' personal data from being used by federal immigration authorities without a warrant. That's another item that we're hoping they will bring back. And then there's the immigration enforcement. And that needs to be clarified. Immigration enforcement, identification enforcement, so we will fix that. But this is more about how and whether or not state law can prohibit ICE agents from wearing masks, make sure that they're wearing body-worn cameras, there was clear identification, and making sure that that includes license plates. The trick, I have had an opportunity to talk to some D-20, some of our D-20 delegates about this. And the trick for a lot of this ICE enforcement, particularly as it relates to trying to dictate how ICE operates, is it becomes a very gray area between state authority and federal authority. This is a federal agency that is established through federal law and is managed through the feds. And so there are some things that I think that state legislatures can try to do. But I think that when we go into the space of trying to dictate how ICE functions and their policies in place internally, that is federal all day. And so I think that there is this need for us to just be mindful of the fact as we're advocating for some of this that there may be some limitations in terms of what the state can do in its authorities and whether or not we might need to advocate at the federal level with Congressman Raskin and Van Hollen's office to try to get some things done at a federal level. The municipal revenues, so we have support MML legislative priority, modernizing municipal revenue structures. So this is something where I asked the mayor of Gaithersburg, Judd Ashman, about, from his perspective, on the MML Legislative Board, kind of what exactly does this mean? Because it seems very, very loosey-goosey. And he did confirm that it is kind of loosey-goosey. And it's kind of purposeful because they're thinking, it probably will be bringing back the F&amp;B, the food and beverage sales tax item, but it could be other things. So communities were encouraged to, you know, it's okay to just say you're supporting MML and what they're doing in this regard. But that kind of gets me to the, this is one item that I would like to get some thoughts about in terms of enabling municipalities to charge utilities for the use of local highway right-of-way. I know that that was something that was discussed when we were talking about our LARs. And I wasn't sure if we should treat this as a separate item or as a suggestion in terms of a possibility that could be considered for additional revenue streams for municipalities. So I know that, I don't know, it was designed to be something very different. But it is possible where we could merge these two and offer up the utilities, especially if the state doesn't have money, offer up the utilities as tribute to force them to pay for the use of municipal right-of-way. And do not tell my utility partners that I said that. So that's one item. And just want to, I see lights, I can stop and take comments. Councilmember Hansak?
Mine was related to that.
Okay. So the other items, transportation vision zero, lowering the speed limits without a traffic study, we're still in support of that. And the environmental item is the Support the Renew Act. I know that there were two other items that were included in the draft. We did not write legislation, we did not write letters in support of those other two items. That's not to say that as our work group comes together and start seeing bills come through, we may see some things and want to weigh in. But I do think that when we're talking about our council priorities, that we should try to stick to what we at least have supported in the past, unless there's an obvious reason, direct city connection for not doing that. And then the advocacy support areas, there's a few items here. So one is the enable recovery of costs for utility-related property damage. I know that staff has been working with PEPCO and has been working with Delegate Charcutian's office. So we do want to make sure that she continues to be in support. I know that she's also been made aware of the residence issues regarding those power surges. So we, I'm using this section just as a way to say, hey, we need you to keep helping us. Similarly, wanting to make them aware of the issues that we're having with the WSSC site plan review process. And I know that we've been engaging them on that as well. I know Ann, Ann and I have been talking at length about the sensitive locations and parking lots and parks and other open air spaces and whether or not they can be considered as sensitive or private locations. And we do have a little bit of an N now with the AG's office. And so there may be, I've talked to some folks at the county level. I know that Ann has been engaging with folks. There's some reason to believe that there may be enough flex in the original legislation and what's in the AG's guidance that could allow us to do this. We're just trying to get some additional clarification of what would need to happen. And so with that, I'm going to be quiet and see if there are any questions, thoughts, concerns. Councilmember Hansak?
I don't want to take too much time because you already made it clear that we're not going to be voting on the capital projects. But if I could just maybe make a placeholder and we could follow up. I was just wondering if someone could clarify, what, remind me what stage we're at with the Maple connectivity in terms of how close we are to getting shovel-ready. I know we're not at shovel-ready, but what percent we're at? And then where does the Maple Bridge itself fall in the scheme of things? The bridge that goes between, it's in such a poor state and I just, I'm unclear. I'm sorry, I haven't asked about this for a while. And again, no need to answer this right away, right now. It's just, I know the funds are getting scarcer and I'm concerned about funding for these things.
We can follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Councilmember Schlegel?
This was also on capital, but I'll just, I wanted to say that of the two proposed bike projects, the Metropolitan Branch Trail is soon going to become a glaring gap in the system as DC is just about done building up to Tacoma Park along Blair Road. And so it seems like that for this coming fiscal year, that would, I would think that would take more priority and be a better thing for the city to do regionally. The New Avenue Bike Way project probably is something that could wait for one more year because the Purple Line is still under construction.
Thank you, Councilmember. That is part of the consideration, the fact that DC is working on theirs. I do believe that Montgomery County has made some progress too, so we would...
Yeah, I see them working along Selim Road, I think, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, I hadn't thought about the fact that the Purple Line isn't up and running yet. So I still think that the New Hampshire Avenue Bike Way needs to be done. But to the questions that I had on the legislative and advocacy, so Ann, what do we know about what bills are potentially going to be introduced on immigration-related issues? Or do I need to wait and ask our delegation in December?
So I certainly don't know all the bills, you know, that any legislator might be interested in. We know that there will be a return of a bill related to the 287G and trying to prohibit that. And we know that there is going to be some legislation revisiting, probably in a different way, some of the data privacy stuff. Those are the ones for sure.
Okay, and then immigration identification. And surely, if sensitive locations can be defined without going to legislation, that makes sense. At first, it didn't seem to me like it was advocacy in the same way as the other two, but I hear it. And then the other thing I wanted to say on environmental, I had asked if we could add balcony solar, which is a bill that Delegate Charcutian is considering to make it easier for tenants to install portable solar panels and get, and get the benefit from it without having to go through all the permitting processes that you do when you put it on your roof. I think that would be a natural for us to be, to be prioritizing. But I don't see it here, so I don't know if it slipped through the cracks or if there's...
I just didn't know what it was and I didn't have anything on it. All right, I'll write something down. So, I mean, I think one of the things that I am also very cautious of is, you know, like allowing our District 20 delegation to put pen to paper on something and share something with us without trying to usurp what their plans are for legislation. So we may need to follow up with Delegate Charcutian just to get a better handle, to see where she is. Because I would hate for us to be in the place of advocating for specific legislation that has yet to be drafted or may not be.
Yeah. Will do.
So Councilmember DeBala, that's your light. Councilmember Landman, is that a new light?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two additional questions about other legislation. The first is, I've heard from at least one local environmental group, and I know this is a big concern for the native tree team and other, the bee pollinator people who are, who buzz around Tacoma Park all the time. Have you heard about bee pollinator protection legislation pending, Ann, at this point? And I think that there are people that are very interested in us supporting pollinator protection legislation.
I haven't heard about it. I've not been asking about it. So, you know, I don't know if you have an indication of who might be sponsoring the bill, but happy to reach out to a legislator on it.
Okay, I'm still waiting to hear back from one of the organizations to see whether they have something specific in mind. But if you do hear anything, if you could let me know.
Sure.
Okay. And the other is on the Police Accountability Act, which I know is not an easy piece of legislation and it was a subject of some discussion last year after having had the experience that we did have with our first trial board here. And I discussed it with the police chief and others on the staff here about our experiences with it and some deficiencies in the law in its implementation. I was wondering whether you know whether there are people moving, attempting to move legislation to refine the law this coming session, if that's on the table, so far as you know.
I've not heard. I'm happy to check in with the ACLU of Maryland. They're usually in the lead on those bills and I'm happy to check in with them.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I had a conversation about this with David Moon, who was very involved in earlier stages of it and, which was very interesting to learn a little bit more about that. And the staff person who worked on this for Will Smith is on maternity leave, but we have it on the calendar to talk more about it in December. But so it seems like it's possible that that might be back on the calendar. And some of what I heard from the police chief after our initial experience suggested that he might have some interest in what is pending, if anything.
Yeah, if, so I think it'll be important to follow up with the chief directly. I know that I've offered staff the opportunity to identify legislative items from a staff perspective and to include them in the document that has been finalized. So if there is a priority, right, that's not to say something that we're not going to be mindful of over the course of a session. But if staff is recommending that this be considered a priority for council, then I need a write-up.
If there's anything percolating that we don't yet know about, it will be something, if I learn anything, I'll certainly, yeah.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes, one observation... Uh, yes, one, one observation was about the utility-related ones, um, that there's an A and a B. Uh, I think the B is, I, I wonder, uh, Mrs. C. Kait whether they might end up being decoupled as things move along, because the B is, is something that looks like a very nice thing to support and it doesn't really cost anybody anything. The, uh, enable municipalities to charge utilities for the use of local highway rights of way. Sorry. Um, if the, if, if A is pursued, that's allowing municipalities to charge utilities for use of local highway rights of way. Um, many might argue that that is simply going to be passed along to consumers, uh, in the form of higher utility rates. Uh, so it looks like of the two, I just wanted to register that B seems like it might be an easier push, but, uh, so I don't know if anybody has a comment on that. I, I just had one other, um, unrelated observation, yeah.
I will just say, many have tried, few have been successful in trying to get SHA to play nice.
Mm-hmm. I was talking, this is about the utilities, yeah.
Yeah, but SHA is in there. So it's establish a formalized statutory process for authorities, um, SHA and utilities and, um, to ensure timely cooperation, um, you know, so whenever you throw SHA in the mix.
We, we all write a lot of emails to people explaining why SHA hasn't done the thing.
[laughing].
My other thing was, uh, uh, when we discussed this earlier, um, the new DEP requirements for municipalities that run their own stormwater to have comprehensive plans, that's got to cost money. And so in a sense, it's an unfunded mandate and I, I wondered whether we could revisit the idea of including that, uh, get, uh, get state support for jurisdictions that need to develop a comprehensive stormwater management plan.
I think this is one that we would need to follow up with our Director of Public Works to get an, to get an idea of the lift. Um, I think we're assuming that a plan could be a lift, but it could actually be maybe not as, right? So, yep, we can, we can follow up.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Westlake.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, in regard to the capital projects, that, yeah, I, I agree and support this order, though it's specific for strategy for this reason. I'm, I'm, would be really eager for us to be able to fund the new Avenue Bike Way project, but I just wanted especially Word 6 people to know that I think this is because we think we're more likely to get money and being strategic about it as opposed to putting that project ahead necessarily in terms of what we wish we could do.
Thank you for that. Okay, we're going to move on to our last item this evening. Um, again, thank you all to those that have provided feedback on this document. Um, in terms of next steps, we'll make some additional edits and have a draft resolution, um, for a council member's consideration and ultimately will be on our agenda for a vote. Um, and so next item, thank you so much, Ann. Uh, I'm sorry we kept until 11:00, 11:00 PM.
You, you, you do good work. It's all, it's, I'm happy to help.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so the, the last item this evening is the development and implementation of a community connectors model.
All right. Hello, everyone. Um, hello again. Uh, so tonight is, uh, the third work session, um, held on the Community Connectors, uh, prior, uh, council priority and initiative. Um, and today we're, we're trying to kind of bring together the previous two work sessions, talk about what's been discussed previously and address some of the outstanding, um, topics of discussion from the previous two, uh, work sessions that we had. Um, so, uh, some of the conversations we've had previously have kind of been in regards to some of the current community engagement, um, approaches that we, that we take. Um, if you remember one of the slides from the previous, uh, work session, work session that we, that we presented on, uh, there was a topic, um, there was a, a spectrum of public current community engagement, um, and that, and one of the first, uh, means of community engagement is inform. Um, so when we look at, uh, some of the ways that we inform the public right now, um, uh, we have, you know, our, just a few examples and there's, um, many more and I'd be happy to touch on those if, um, if need be, but, uh, city website, other digital media, such as social media, um, and our bi-weekly newsletter, um, our monthly newsletter that goes to, um, uh, goes house to house and to apartment buildings in the city. Um, and we also have our city TV team who are, um, active in the community and the community events as well as, uh, our, uh, other city activities, um, as well as, uh, my dad's calling me. Um, in-person outreach activities, um, as such as when there's an events and there's canvas, canvassing, tabling, um, and, uh, things of that nature, um, other community events that might invite the city out, as well as community surveys such as the budget survey that's going on right now. Um, and, uh, one of the, you know, and as, as we have all those great ways of communicating with the, communicating with the public, there is still an identified challenge that we need to address and that is increasing community engagement with hard-to-reach groups. Um, and through our, uh, various conversations so far, we've identified, um, some broad challenges. Um, one of, one such being, you know, many of these, uh, hard-to-reach groups, um, struggle with different barriers to community engagement, especially city, engaging with city life, um, such as language barriers, um, digital access barriers, or just a general lack of awareness of, you know, city activities, um, making it hard for them to get, uh, that key information to get them engaged. Um, and without engagement, community, uh, these communities that are hard-to-reach will stay disconnected from these vital services that we, um, you know, really need to bring them in, uh, bring them into the loop for. Um, and that just, and with that continued disengagement, that just increases gaps in equity and wellbeing. Um, additionally, poor engagement can, uh, poor engagement or, you know, a continued lack of engagement can continue to reduce trust in city institutions and the city's ability to meet residents' needs, um, along with, you know, a general lack of, uh, government and, um, uh, lack of trust in government that is, you know, very prevalent, uh, especially in today's climate. Oops. Um, and so this slide just shows some of the, uh, some of the summary of the council decisions that have been made on this topic specifically to date. Um, so back in 2022, there was the American Rescue Plan Act that, uh, American Rescue Plan Act that provided fund, funding, um, that then council directed to, to utilize portions of that funding for a community connectors slash navigators as it, as it was originally known as, identified as. And then, uh, in 2024, there was, uh, council identified, um, established it as a council bu, council budget priority, and then in 2024, 25, it was identified as a council priority. Um, so based on our, again, our previous conversations, um, we had, uh, worked to clarify the preliminary, preliminary goals and objectives for a community program, specified how, what types of information exists and how it could be shared, um, and then as well as outlining what next steps are needed for council and staff. So quickly, you know, there are three, again, broad goals of community connector program just generally. Um, one is to increase community engagement with hard-to-reach groups and that includes two-way dialogue. So, um, and by two-way dialogue, we mean communication with, uh, from the city to residents and then, then having that feedback, uh, come back from residents to the city, um, and creating that reciprocal loop, um, as well as improving methods of distributing city information. Um, so how do we reach people where they are? And then increasing awareness of act and access to community resources and social services such as the, uh, great resources, great resources that are provided by our many local nonprofits and other community groups. And so what are some types of information that can be shared? Um, three broader, three broad groups include, uh, information as we touched on earlier, so that might be city news and announcements, trash recycling, um, schedules, uh, so on and so forth, resources such as voter registration guide, um, food resources and, um, you know, uh, one, one great example would be the, uh, housing, um, information packets that the, uh, HCD department has been putting together, um, as well as social services as I, as I touched on earlier, um, things like emergency rental assistance, SNAP benefits, um, food access, uh, things that like some of our local nonprofits are working on, um, community development organizations. And, uh, if you want to see some additional, um, uh, examples of that kind of information, you can see the appendix, which are the last two slides. So what are some approaches? And, um, you'll see a green, very kind of complex diagram there and I'd be happy to kind of, uh, talk about how I created that. But, um, the one, one, a couple of general approaches that can be taken to advance this program would be first to collect data, understand our, uh, communication and community needs for those hard-to-reach groups especially, um, and then working to form a, a network of community organizations that resident trusts, which is highlighted in the diagram there to the right. Um, developing infrastructure and internal systems to promote and share city information, um, so such as, you know, increasing language capacity, uh, having, um, in, in more organizations in the fold that can help us reach the, their current, um, uh, res, the residents they serve and the community members they serve. And then, uh, again, collaborating with local organizations to disseminate that information and resources and support services directly, as well as potentially developing civic education programs, um, and targeting underrepresented populations. Um, in this slide here, um, it's a little bit small, but if you can see it, uh, there is a poten, a potential framework for what a, uh, you know, a system like this might look like. Um, so in the first, in the first, uh, rectangle there, you'll see situations. So we know the current situation, the cur, which highlights some of the issues that we're trying to address, um, in one of the earlier slides. Um, and then in the next, uh, in the next box, you see resources. So what are some of the resources that are available to us right now or, uh, you know, potential, potential resources available to us in the future to address those, those concerns? Um, and you also see the priorities that have been, uh, highlighted in our previous discussions. So some of the resources can include, you know, funding that has been laid out, the $150,000 currently in ARPA funding, uh, that has moved the general fund, uh, or, sorry, that, uh, that is still in, uh, that, yeah, that has been moved to general fund. Uh, technical assistance from National League of Cities, um, collaboration with local nonprofits, so that community network that we're, that we have been discussing, um, city educational materials and resources, um, such as the, the things that we are currently doing. Um, and then, uh, other in-person outreach events, um, and then as well as partnership with state local governments, uh, like local organizations. Um, and then output. So what are some things that we can get out of, uh, out of this work? Um, or so first you'll see the, in the activity section, um, collecting data to understand communication needs, and this is in the part of the last slide. Um, and then what are some of the things we can get out? Also, number of people reached, number of people who participate in programs and events, number of educational materials distributed, number of website visits, um, things that can be actually measured, um, to determine how, uh, these, these networks are working. Um, and then we also had highlighted some outcomes. So there are a couple of different, um, uh, outcomes that we could, that we hope to get out of this pro, program, um, and some examples here, there are short-term outcomes that we could hope for, medium-term and long-term. Short-term, um, generally increased awareness of city government and services, uh, improved knowledge of the role and, and function of city government, and then increased access to community resources and support services. Medium-term might be, um, through that increased, uh, engagement in the short-term, greater civic participation, improved trust and more effective delivery of city services. Um, and then long-term, we hope to see, you know, through that increased engagement and built trust and improved overall, um, amount of community engagement in the city. So those individuals who are hard to reach, um, if we're able to, you know, successfully build this network, um, hope, we, we hope to see more of those individuals come back into the, uh, or, um, you know, start to participate in ways that we hadn't seen them participate before in city, in city government. And, uh, as well as creating sustainable community networks that support residents. And, uh, I've talked previously about being proactive. So as issues arise, um, how do we get ahead? And these networks can, can be ve, very important for being, for being proactive in how we address the needs of residents. Um, and, um, the, there, and so there is a couple of other, um, the important assumptions and external factors, uh, community members. One assumption is that community members are receptive to the information that's being shared. Um, and another is that well-coordinated information sharing will result in residents engaging more with the city. Um, through these networks, those are assumptions that we'd be able to measure and determine, um, if they are, you know, in fact, uh, true and then address, uh, you know, and shape our network based on that. Um, other external factors that, uh, need to be considered include economic conditions, um, employment rates, um, uh, external federal policy changes like increased immigration enforcement. These are all things that could, uh, you know, really help determine how engaged a, a community is. Um, and there are also things that need to be taken into consideration when we are forming a community connectors program. So that brings us to the NLC Community Engagement Academy. Um, and, uh, as you know, the city was selected as a 2020, 2025 cohort amongst, uh, five other communities around the country. Um, and we will receive technical assistance to evaluate our current needs, um, or evaluate our current engagement efforts, um, and assess current, current needs, develop the work plan for a community connectors program that will help provide a step-by-step, you know, guide for us, uh, and milestones that need to be reached to implement, um, this program. And then as, and then, uh, as we talked about in the last slide, establishing that long-term strategy that will create sustainable, um, uh, community engagement for the community. So next steps, um, based on, you know, what we've talked about so for, so far, um, we do, does the council agree with staff proceeding to work with NLC to collect information in support of finalizing work plan, agree with the vision goals and potential approaches of community connectors program? Um, and then, uh, staff will return with an update, um, on the progress, uh, as we get further in the, further in the, uh, NLC process, um, in January, February. And then there's the appendix. So I'm happy to take any additional questions at this time.
Great. All right. Well, um, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, I found that this, this outline kind of helped fulfill in some of the gaps. Um, and definitely want to hear what others think. Uh, Councilmember Schlegel.
Yes, thank you. I had a question and I, it may have been sort of addressed the last time we talked, but I just can't remember about baseline measurements and will the NLC, um, Pro, Academy, um, build in baseline measurements? I, when I'm looking at the, the most comprehensive slide with the columns, the middle column there is output participation and the first six of those, number of people reached, number of people who participate, number of educational materials distributed, number of website visits, all of those would be things where in order to see what the output has been and what changes have occurred due to the program, we'll need baseline measures.
It's certainly something that could be included and, um, you know, we're still in the process of shaping what this program's going to look like. Uh, and, uh, I, I think a really important piece of that is going to be, you know, um, setting up something that allows us to measure, uh, the effectiveness. And, um, so that's a really good point and something that we should, we will take into consideration going forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember DeBala.
Yeah, thanks. This is, this is very helpful. I have, um, a few things and I'll try to be brief and maybe send you an email. Um, so starting with the challenges, um, I like the way that you put them. There's one thing that I thought was missing, which is, which we learned in the energy program a couple of years ago, relevance. So if you don't invite, if you don't talk to people in terms that, that matter to them, you could be asking them to do all sorts of great stuff they don't, they're not interested. So it's not just that they struggle and all of these things, but it's also that, are you put, are you putting it in terms that, that are relevant to them? So I think that's, uh, that's, I don't know if that's a city challenge or I don't know where that fits in, but I think it's an important point that might be missing. Um, I like the goals. Um, I assume that all three of them are equally weighted and it's not that one is more important than the other. Cause I, at first I was like, why are you leading with information? But that's okay. Okay. Um, I think that the idea of, um, two-way engagement gets a little bit lost. I think that the idea of two-way engagement gets a little bit lost as we get into more detail. So I would suggest that, that that be something that get talked about with NLC. How to build in the two-way engagement. So for example, somewhere in here, I guess it's the activities, surveys, showing up at meetings, making budget comments, whatever. There's other ways you can measure. The input come, the comments come in the other way. The engagement come in the other way. It really seems like it fell off the table. And last, the assumptions. I, I think community members are receptive to the information that's being shared. Well, that I just talked about. So I wouldn't assume that, actually. I would try to work on that. And the second one, a well-coordinated information sharing will result in engaging more with the government. Again, I wouldn't assume that. Because you also need to invite people, and you need to do it in ways that they find appealing. As opposed to just hand them information. So those are things I would, I would work, I would look to working with NLC on to testing those out.
I should, I should clarify, by assumptions, we mean assumptions that are, that are, that might be, might be made currently, but they're not assumptions that we're currently making. Yes.
All right. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you. I, I, could you flip to this slide, draft program framework? Thanks. I like this slide. I think this helps us imagine how you might think about the process with NLC. I, I just wanted to recommend that under the resources box, and this is sort of a longstanding thought that I have, that you count among the resources, very importantly, your city council members themselves, who are democratically elected by a large number of the populace, and our city committee members, including our youth council. I think that they are absolutely essential resources in the communications chain that are extremely underutilized and under systematically utilized by our current chains. And then I would also like to suggest, under output, where you have participation and looking at indicators, but maybe if you go to the long-term column under outcomes, I, I personally would love to see under that column something that said, you know, more demogra, not just improved overall community engagement, but more demographically representative community engagement. And I think in order to get at that, much like we've, we've begun to sort of do, but we aren't doing it systematically just yet, I think. We're gathering the data, but not analyzing it that much. Is then under your outputs, you're looking at the demographic distribution and characteristics of your participation and probably ward distribution as well. So, and among other, among other characteristics that I think are important. You could look at the committee applications where we've begun to try to systematically collect some of that data about whether they're renters, whether they're homeowners, et cetera. And I think that, but using the language of demographically representative of our city, I think has been a very important guidepost for our police force, just for example, as well as our committee distribution on which we have made progress. I think largely because we've begun to measure it. So I would strongly encourage you to integrate that into the NLC process. And then, and then going back to the previous slide from this one, I like this diagram. I also just want to say though, that I know that diagrams by definition are oversimplified, right? But I, I guess I, I think, I think this is very much oversimplified because I would like to see, based on the goals that, that we've established, that there's a, there's a, an inner circle there of your intermediaries, and that it's not just going straight out to your community organizations. Because I think we'll miss a lot if we see it that way. And that, to me, I'm, I'm a little bit struggling with this diagram because this feels to me like where we began with our first work session. And, and it's what I'm struggling with a little bit, that I, I can't see all the communications issues being resolved through this lens. But, but your other, this slide helps me get more there than this diagram. I, I maybe revisit the diagram. Thank you.
And I just want to, to that point, if you go back to the, to the logic, I guess the logic model on the next slide. Okay. I think it's important to keep in mind that that network of community organizations is, it looks to be just one activity. And I think that there's some other activities that's not spelled out as much because there's been a lot of focus on that network. So like developing infrastructure and internal systems to promote and share city information, just making this up, when I saw this, I was like, oh, do we want to take an MCPS approach and do robocalls in multiple languages? Do you want to? But, but those are different activities. And so I think it's, it is important for staff to, while I know that there is an emphasis on the network, the network of community organizations, because there is this, this focus on the social services to start, but keeping in mind the full breadth of the activities that are noted in your logic, because they may take you down different paths than just the, the networks alone, which what is what that graphic shows.
And I think one of the important things about the network is allowing to build, and I've touched on this a good bit, but building that capacity so that as we have these additional activities that we want to undertake, increased staff capacity means that we can, you know, branch out and do more things.
Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just one follow-up real quick. So the other thing is, going back to, I think, Schlegel's point about baseline values, I, I'm starting to see the whole community gauge, maybe I'm taking this too big, but I'm starting to see it as sort of the development of a communication strategy writ large across multiple departments. Now, maybe that's bigger than you'd like us to think of this. But when I do think of that, and I look at your first slide, you know, current community engagement approach, I think to myself, well, where are we now on just the very basic stuff? I, I don't think that I've seen that during my time, you know? How many people look at our city TV station? I mean, just hopefully data that we might already have as a starting place even for the NLC process. And I think it would be quite useful, frankly, for, just, just to have on that very first slide, if it were easy to get some of those data points, like where are we now on the number of people who save, either that are using these or that say they get their main data from there? And that could be quite informative for our budget discussions going into the spring, no matter where you are in the NLC process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Councilmember Landman?
Yes, thank you. Starting with the point that you were just making, Councilmember Hansak. A lot of my Ward One constituents tell me that they find out what's going on in the city from the newsletter that they get from me every week. I don't even see the communications from council members listed on there. So I'd add, I'd add that to your list of community engagement because for whatever reason, they don't seem to use a lot of those other resources. So that, that comes back, I think, to the point that, that Councilmember Hansak raised earlier about, at least we're under the illusion that we think we're a resource. I, I want to return to the, to the theme that I seem to be flogging like a dead horse about how, to me, one of the key efforts that we're engaging in with a goal that I see is really important to this, is that it is not just about information sharing, but it's about the engagement that results from the information sharing. And I think there's progress in this from where we started. But I, I feel as though there's still ways to go before. It, it shows that we are taking on board fully that it's not just about us telling people stuff, but it's about us listening to them to make sure that the resources that we're providing to them are the ones that they are really deeply looking for. And so I, I wanted to see whether there was, you know, a way to sort of show that listening to them, people that we're trying, the hard-to-reach people, that part of that is us not just finding them so that we can show them the stuff we've already got, but we're finding them so that we can make sure that we're paying close attention to what they are indicating they really need. This is something that I think Councilmember Hansak was really clear with us earlier on in the immigration crisis that we're in, that the communities that we think we're trying to reach may not want the things that we think we're giving them, that we need to be listening very carefully to what they are saying they need. And I, I think if it could be, when you were saying a two-way street, that that's part of, of the activity that we're engaging in, that we are engaging with them for purposes of listening on that side. But then also, if you could look at this slide that, I'm sorry, they don't have numbers on them, but this one, that says at the top, what types of information could be shared through the program. I was thinking that, you know, all the things that are listed here, they don't yet reflect, sort of, maybe what I'm talking about is the engagement component. And maybe this isn't the right slide for it, but the pieces there that would show, that would reflect how knowing about these things, it's not just about the things we have to offer to people, but the ways in which that they might engage with the city. For example, serving on the youth council, applying for a city job, getting a library card so that they can access the library services. These are really just about sort of, you know, things we can give you that put you in a passive position of taking from us because you're a person in need. But no, there are a lot of things about city life, you know, being a participant in a recreational program so that you can be the star on the basketball team might be, you know, a better way to start engaging in city life. So if there was a way for the, for this type of activity to be also included, I think it would maybe help with the engagement component. I hope I'm making myself clear, but anyway.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say, you know, the first activity is to collect data to understand, if you go to the logic. To collect data to understand communication needs for hard-to-reach groups in the community. And so I think it is important, because I, I keep, I keep hearing the two-way, and I think the only way that you're going to do the two-way is to figure out an approach to actually be able to understand what those needs are. And so in, in my mind, that item, and it could potentially need to be revised, but that item is designed for the purpose of understanding not just what people want to know, but how do they prefer that you told it to them? In prior city, in prior city surveys, citywide surveys, we learned people get more of their information from the listservs than they do the city website. That was one of the reasons why we're really pushing to revise the website. So I do think that that activity involving understanding communication needs, what do they need, how do they get information? What are some ways that we can better serve them is, is going to be really important.
Yeah. And I think it goes back too, to this, this long-term goal of increasing that community engagement. You know, one of the assumptions we put down here is that people are going to engage. That if we offer them the opportunities and we are able to reach them, you have to break through those barriers first. And that's why you have to, you know, these medium-term goals, improve trust, that's one way to break a barrier. Increase, you know, decrease barriers. That would be a medium term that could be, could be added there. So those are ways that you can get to that long-term, and then you start to bring more people into, into the fold. But knowing that there are these very real challenges that we face in bringing people into the fold, we need to be able to work to get to that point so that they feel comfortable and, and know that they can come to the city to participate in those. And I would say that the things like that are maybe a little more further down in that engagement spectrum. Instead of inform, which I think this, these things are maybe more, more of the inform, inform lens. We are directing people directly, informing people about what they can access, how they can get these different resources. To get to that, you know, that loop where they're now becoming engaged and participating in city activities, like participating in committees, you need to be able to get from A, inform, to B, further engagement. And that's some of the, some of the things we need to work through.
Councilmember Gilbert, I saw a hand earlier. Do you have a comment? And I just want to remind folks, it's 11:30.
Yeah, I did. I, I wanted to thank Ryan for all the work he's doing, first of all. And just quickly ask, you, you mentioned in the draft program for framework slide, Ryan, one of the bulletins, city in-person outreach activities. Who are you envisioning, or do we already have staff that's doing that kind of stuff? If not, who do you envision doing that, that kind of work? Going out in the community and doing these in-person activities? Along with the collaborating with local organizations to disseminate information, et cetera, in the outputs category?
That's certainly one of the challenges that we currently face. We do have staff who, you know, will volunteer to participate in these in-person activities. But again, hope, hoping that, and building a network that takes certain things off of staff's plates and increasing our capacity, and potentially getting, you know, increased community, community relationships that we can help leverage, that we could help increase that ability to be at events, if, if not already. But there are staff who are often, you know, I think this, this point specifically is just talking about, you know, tabling and participation in community resource fair-type events, which a city is often invited to and often will, will participate in. But I think there's definitely opportunity for growth as we, as we go forward. If that helps clarify.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. And I'm excited about the long-term, what we'll be able to do with this program. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Councilmember Schlegel?
Thank you again, Director Kelly, for opening this up. I, I, just really quickly, as a teacher, it's, I always notice that it's when you respond to what is immediately in front of somebody. And I'm just amplifying what somebody else said, that then they become open to realizing like, oh, you're interested in them, and, and what else are you up to? For example, just to make this very concrete, if I'm, if I'm trying to teach something that's an abstract concept, and the sun's in a kid's eyes, like the first thing I have trained myself to do is go and close the blinds, you know? And then I, I say to the class, when you see someone signaling a need, even if they're not verbally stating it, you have to respond to that first. And so I just wanted to double down on, on what some others have said in that regard. And, and related to that, we've been talking about language as a barrier. And it seems important to, as you go through this NLC process, to really understand in what way is language a barrier, to what extent? For example, I know we have many people who speak a language other than English in the home. What percentage of those people cannot operate in English, cannot read any English, or can't process verbally written or verbally spoken English so quickly? And then also, is it, what reading level are people at? It's something we have to talk about a lot as teachers. You can give great directions, but it's too complex. And if you, we now have tools where you can actually change the reading level with a click of a button. And so just to be sure that you understand the actual nature of that problem. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so it sounds like, because I want to get us out of here before midnight, that it, it sounds as if council is in general agreeance in terms of the vision and goal and kind of what's outlined, with some additional feedback and some additional tweaks. I just want to make sure that, that folks are okay with the moving forward with the NLC process using the, the framework that's been discussed along with some of the additional feedback that was provided today. And then they will come back to the council in January or February to provide us with an update.
Madam Mayor, can I ask one last question? I think I heard from a resident that they had been invited to serve on a connectors focus group of some kind? Is there, have you reached out to a, a number of people? And how did, and is that an ongoing process? And, and who are those people, and how'd you pick them?
So that was part of the, not specifically regarding the Community Connectors Program, and I think I did respond to an email regarding this. Yeah. But it was just, just briefly, it was part of the NLC process that was, and a group of individuals were determined by the core team to partake in a focus group to help, again, to Councilmember Schlegel's point, help determine, you know, what are some of the, what are some of our needs? And what are some of the barriers and also challenges to community engagement for their, for their groups? And so it was a widely representative group of individuals who were, who were chosen and was conducted by the NLC process. The city was not. The city was not involved in the actual focus group.
Okay. So again, it sounds like staff is given, has been given a general green light to continue to proceed. I know that we plan to do a resolution. Are, are folk okay with us delaying a resolution until staff comes back in January after they followed up with NLC, after some of the feedback that we've provided, given where they are now? I'm seeing lots of heads shaking. Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I know it's late. I, I am generally in favor of the NLC process, and I, I know all the staff knows this, but I'm just saying it out loud for full transparency. I appreciate the additional engagement that the staff has had with, with, I'm sure with others as well, but with myself and Councilmember Gilbert. And I, I am eager, as we proceed with this simultaneously, that we see some shorter-term steps that might support us in kind of filling in some of the stopgap measures for, for getting out to multifamily buildings as council members, if nothing else, to help us do the work that we are already doing, especially targeting our multifamily buildings. And I think you know what I mean. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak.
Okay, so it sounds like there is general consensus for staff to proceed. We will not do a resolution. I will make sure we remove that from the upcoming agendas. And what we will do is, staff will come back, we'll schedule you for January, February to come back after you've consulted with NLC to flush this out more. Okay? Awesome. All right. And so with that, everybody, have a good night, go to bed.